All right, good morning, everyone. It's Friday, June 18th, City Council Chambers. We're here for our council meeting for today, Friday. We meet three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. All meetings are open to the public. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via Channel 35. Also, we are on the Internet. And we are going to start with our presentations for today before we begin our official meeting. Since we don't have our 10 members present in our first presentation, since we are live on television, we'll be council member from the great 12th District, Council Member, Reserve Officer Greg Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a real thrill and honor to be here today with a person we're awarding a very special recognition to. Andre Barat served the City of Los Angeles in the Police Commission as Inspector General since 2003. But he has recently been named by President Barack Obama to serve as U.S. Attorney General for the Central District of California. So he has left us, but he has left behind a great legacy, and we're very proud of him. In his new role, he will oversee all federal prosecutions in LA County, Riverside County, San Bernardino County, Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, and San Luis Obispo Counties. And if I was you, I'd move my office to Santa Barbara, probably. I think that's where I would go. As Inspector General, he served with the Police Commission and provided civilian oversight of the LAPD. He supervised a staff of about 32 professionals, who included lawyers, professional auditors, and former law enforcement executives. Mr. Barat conducted and oversaw the internal investigations to ensure compliance with LAPD policy and the mandates of the Federal Consent Decree. He reviewed administrative investigations with the LAPD, including officer-involved shootings and use of force and personnel complaint investigations. He supervised and conducted independent audits of the LAPD operations, prepared policy recommendations for the Police Commission, and consulted with the command and staff patrol officers as well on PD policies. Before he started working as the Police Commission Inspector General, he worked with the law firm of Quinn, Emanuel, Urquhart, Oliver, and Hedges, working on business and white collar in litigation matters. From 1995 through 1999, Andre was the Assistant U.S. Attorney General for Central California District, so he certainly knows his way around that office, where he investigated and prosecuted federal crimes, including violent crime, federal trials, and grand jury investigations. He prepared and argued appellate briefs before the 90th District Court of Appeals, and certainly that takes a great deal of patience. And he graduated from our Pepperdine University here in Los Angeles, and then he started his career with the LA County DA's Office in 1991. I have to say personally that I watched the job that Andre did grow under his leadership. It became an important part of LAPD and a welcome part of LAPD. When you can get both sides of the philosophy in Los Angeles, the very left and the very right, to say, "You did a good job, you're doing something very right." When you can get the ACLU to say, "You're doing it the right way," and you get the Police Protective League saying, "You're doing it the right way," you're doing something very right. And I know that John Mack here, and I'll turn the mic over to John in just a second, I know the Commission was very proud of the work Andre did, the people of Los Angeles were very proud of the work he did, and I think we all owe him a great deal of gratitude for making that office an integral part of the LAPD. From a go-forward basis, it will always be an integral part, and Andre Barat is the man that grew that division, made it work, made it something we are all proud of, and I'm just very pleased to be here to say to him, "Thank you for the service to the people of LA, and congratulations on your appointment. We're very proud of your ascension to the role of the USDA's Office for Central District." So with that, I'd like to turn over the President of the Police Commission, our good friend, John Mack.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Smith, and on behalf of my colleagues at the Police Commission and our staff, I'm very proud to join with Councilmember Smith and entire City Council in recognizing Andre Barat. I agree with Councilmember Smith, Andre Barat brought the highest degree of professionalism, integrity, and he brought tremendous credibility. There's no way that the Police Commission could have been as effective as we hopefully were had it not been for Andre Barat. He clearly was the eyes and ears of the Commission, did it honorably, and he elevated the role of Inspector General to new heights. And I know personally, throughout the city, during some of the most contentious periods that we had, whether it was in South LA, East LA, the May Day event, Andre was there, people trusted him, people respected him because they knew he was a straight shooter, and we know that he's going to make a great U.S., United States Attorney. And so we're very proud to join with you and thank you for recognizing this great public service.
Mr. LaBons, Tom LaBons.
Mr. Smith, President Mack. Andre, I'm just pleased because in this business of ours of helping people, people get selected to do very, very unique roles. And your role that you elevated as the Inspector General really gave it the position that it needs and the great commission that Mayor Viero-Goss has put together, so I want to thank you, and I'm proud you're working for the federal government and a great part of California and a lot of work to do. And I see a lot of great people behind you and your wife, family, and everybody. Congratulations to you. Thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. LaBons. Mr. Smith?
And we want to present you this resolution for the City Council congratulating your years of service here, thanking you, and would you like to say a few words that are...
If I could, sure, yeah, sure. Well, I am incredibly humbled and first off, thank you to Councilmember Smith for arranging this. It's a very kind gesture. You know, when I was walking over this morning, I thought of a couple of things. This may be one of the few opportunities that I'll actually get to speak without having a time limit, so I wanted to make sure I took advantage of that. I also thinking about the fact that I do miss my city car very much, but that's another story. But lastly, one thing, oh, thank you, sir. But what I really did think about was something going back, my goodness, to almost 2000, 2001, when the primary monitor, Mike Cherkaski, talked about what he viewed would be successful for the consent decree, and he analogized it to a stool with three legs and the importance of having each one of those legs in order for the stool to stand up. And he described it as the city family, the mayor of City Council, the police department, and then the Police Commission. And so to the extent I've received any recognition today, it's really because of that collaborative work. I mean, each leg of the stool had to work together in order to make it a success. You know, when I think about the mayor and the City Council, this body here has been so supportive of the role and responsibility of the Inspector General's Office, providing us the staffing and the resources during difficult times, ensuring that we had the bodies to do the work. Certainly, the Police Commission, you know, I don't know if I can say anything other than simply magnificent, while working for just a great group of individuals that were incredibly supportive of the IG, allowing us to be independent, working collaboratively. And then lastly, but certainly not least, the LAPD. They definitely changed the landscape of the relationship between our office and the Police Department. We worked well together, we agreed to disagree at times, but I think there was a lot of mutual respect. And so to the extent, I think this really just acts as an acknowledgement of the great work of all these individuals. And I am humbly and incredibly satisfied to see all these wonderful people. These are the people that really deserve the award. These are the people that are doing the work day in, day out, from both the Commission's side as well as the Inspector General's side. And I know that people like Django Sibley and Gary McCaskill, and certainly Nicole Bershon, the new Inspector General, will do a fabulous job. Nicole was an outstanding choice, and I know she'll do an excellent job representing both the community and the police, working for the Commission. So thank you very much, I'm very honored by this, and it will definitely be prominently displayed in my office today. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you and congratulations, Andre. You've done extremely well. Andre Barat, and don't forget, Andre, don't forget, you're still a Harley man. Mr. Rosendale, our next presentation, CD 11, Mr. Bill Rosendale. Okay, let's call the roll, we do have our quorum. Let's call the roll, please. Mr. Rosendale, hold on a second, we're going to call the roll.
Alec Han, Cardniss Han, Wizar, Coetz, Kacori, and LaBons Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Wes, and Zine Garcetti, 11 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Very well, thank you. We will continue with our presentations, Mr. Rosendale.
Yes, good morning, Mr. President and colleagues. This is a very joyous moment for me. Many of you know Whitney Blumenfeld, who is my planning, senior planning deputy that plays a major role in all my planning decisions in the 11th District. We're talking about her grandmother, who is standing right next to me, right here. Marjorie Greenberg was born on June 25th, 1915, at home in a specially-prepared hospital room. She was born when gas lights were still being used and radio was the only means of mass communications. Her father, Meyer Raphael, was the son of Charles Meyer Raphael, who was raised in a homestead. We had homesteads here, folks, way before our time, in downtown Los Angeles, and founded the Raphael Glass Company, one of the first glass companies in Los Angeles. Raphael Glass Company installed all the glass in the Grand Central Station and the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion in 1920. Back then, Janus Han, you know, they had cars in 1915. The top speed, by the way, was 15 miles an hour and could go 25 miles on a tank of gas. Well, we've come a long way on that, we're still not where we need to be, but we're moving really good. There was no smog, people were friendly, and men held doors open for women. There you go, Janus, you're right about that. These were the good old days, as I'm hearing. Marjorie married Lester Greenberg in 1934. His family founded the Harris and Frank Clothing Stores, and the main store was on 7th Street in Los Angeles, next to the Ultra Cafe Cafeteria. Unfortunately, Lester passed away 12 years ago at the age of 84. Marjorie still plays bridge three times a week with a group of friends, 10 to 15 years her junior, all of whom are widows. She has lived a long and wonderful life and looks forward to the future and to many more games at Bridge, hopefully with the same group of friends. And before she speaks, I want to bring out the certificate, as her granddaughter just handed to me, and it goes like this. Happy birthday, Marjorie Greenberg, on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council. It is a pleasure to join your family and friends to celebrate your 95th birthday. May you be with us another 20 years, and may we all be so lucky to reach your age with such grace, vitality, humor, and good looks. My big question, as I would ask anyone who has made it to 95, is what's the secret of long life?
I don't know what's the secret, but I think you just got to keep busy and enjoy what you do. I think it's very important.
Keep busy and enjoy what you do. Give her another round of applause. My pleasure. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go into the other room now.
Thank you, congratulations to you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. Mr. Parks, for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to introduce the community and to you, to a group of young people, if you stand up. They're coming from Sacramento, they're here from a variety of schools, Folks Ranch Elementary School from El Grove, Hanshaw Middle School from Modesto, Brett Hart Middle School from San Jose, Meadowbrook Middle School from Poway. They're accompanied by a variety of chaperones and teachers, Jim Bentley, Jen Watson, Vicki Nasamo, thank you, Goldman, also Ms. Blackwell, Ms. Shaw, Ms. Ilers, Charis, and also Lynn Frank Fredericks. We'd just like to introduce them to the council and thank them for being a part of a civics class coming down. They were all winners in their local competition, and they'll be in a competition later, a presentation in Little Tokyo later on today. They'll be touring the City Hall during their state, so we just want to welcome them here.
Thank you, welcome to Los Angeles in El Centro City Hall. Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you.
Ms. Han, our next presentation from Councilmember Janus Han.
Thank you very much. Go Lakers! Oh, come on, we can do better than that. Go Lakers! That's why I wore my purple and gold. Colleagues, I'm so pleased today to honor just a longtime champion and a longtime friend of the Hans and a longtime friend of everyone in Los Angeles, Brad Pie Jr. We are honoring him today because on June 26th, Brad will be inducted into the California Boxing Hall of Fame. My friendship with Brad goes back a long way. He served as Assistant Chief Deputy to my dad, Supervisor Kenny Han. He always represented my father very well and was such a friend to the community, a friend to everyone in Los Angeles County, and certainly kept my dad apprised of what was going on in the sports world, which was never my father's first priority. But Brad is being honored today for his promotion of sports in Southern California. Brad has worked extensively in radio, television, and print media, allowing him to travel all over the world. He is considered the Dean of Black Sportscasters by the National Newspaper Publishers Association, which has presented him with various awards of excellence. He formerly worked for the LA Sentinel as its sports editor, as well as for KGFK, KACE, KJHL, and KDAY radio stations. Currently, he's a sports columnist for the Los Angeles Watts Times. And the beat goes on. As a former longtime member of the California State Athletic Commission, the Los Angeles Coliseum Commission, and the Los Angeles City Recreation and Parks Commission, Brad is known for his promotion of programs for our young people, including the Challengers Boys and Girls Club, the Woodcraft Rangers, and the NAACP. He is a familiar figure at public school career days and motivational events designed to encourage young people to excel in the classroom. It is for his reporting and coverage of sports, including boxing, as well as his extensive community service, that Brad is being inducted into the Boxing Hall of Fame next week at Sportsman's Lodge in Studio City. He's married to Eunice, and they are the proud parents of four children, three daughters, one son, and their oldest daughter, Jan Maria, was elected by an overwhelming majority as the first black woman on the Desert Hot Springs City Council. Very good, girls rule. Brad, I'm so proud of you for this accomplishment, I'm so proud of you for your incredible career, and certainly for your wonderful loyalty to my father all those years, and to my mother, still, you take such an interest in her well-being and what she's doing. You are truly a hero and well-deserved of this wonderful honor of being inducted into the Boxing Hall of Fame. And on behalf of the entire City Council of Los Angeles, we wanted to present you with this resolution commemorating this wonderful achievement of your life. So congratulations, Brad.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to just welcome Brad. He has been a mainstay in our community for so many decades with the tagline, Pretty Little Green ones, and Tommy Tucker Playroom, and things of that nature in all of his columns. He has been a person that basically has really been the pathfinder for so many columnists, not just sports columnists, but columnists that wanted to get into that business. I had the pleasure of being Brad Pie once a year for about five years. I used to travel to go to the NBA All-Star Games, and I found out immediately, if you're a member of the media, you're treated much better. So for five or six years, I was Brad Pie when I went to those meetings, and I would have my credentials and I would go to everything, and they began to look at me strange because I was the only one without a real camera. I would just kind of go to all the events. And then one day, I was at an event, and somebody was asking me why I was sitting there, and I had my ID on, I said, "I'm Brad Pie, I'm from the Pittsburgh Courier," I believe it was. And so the guy looked at me and says, "I know Brad Pie, and you're not Brad Pie." So we had to leave immediately. So, but no, it was a great time. My son and I used to go to those games all the time, but he was very instrumental in assisting us, and also the Sentinel and all of those newspapers that carry stories about little-known facts and black history and athletes, and really always had a community flavor to it. It wasn't just athletic accomplishments, it's what they were doing and the impact they had in the community. So thank you, Brad. So thank you, Brad. I hope to see you out at the ceremony because I'm trying to- we're trying to arrange a schedule to get out there, but it's a great event to go to the Hall of Fame and great local athletes that we've read about and seen, and to see that the Golden State is putting more and more people into the Hall of Fame is just great. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Wesson. Mr. LeBons, you'll come after Mr. Wesson.
Just hold your horses, Tommy. You will get your shot. Switch reels. That's what I think about when I think about Brad. I just wanted to rise to say that it was- I didn't know that you were going to be honored today, so it was a pleasant surprise for me to get to see you. I've known you for- when both of us were young, okay? And you have been a role model in, you know, not just journalism, but politics. Janice, you probably grew up on Brad's knee as he worked diligently for your dad, and I know you were Mr. Fukai's go-to person, so we're a better community because of you. And for people like me, I mean, you blazed the trail, so it was easy for me to map out my future based on people like you going into unknown territory. So I thank you personally. And Janice, it's great to bring the big fella back.
Mr. LeBons.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Hey, was it reel to reel, or what did you say?
Switch reels.
Switch reels. Yeah, okay, good. It was on K-Day, right? K-Day. All right, good. As well as all the newspapers. Brad Pye also gave opportunity for young athletes who may not have been seen unless they were read or heard from his reporting. He was the voice of all the great athletes of the central part of the city, the south part of the city, and a great commissioner on the Coliseum, a great supporter of the 84 Games. He truly is a hero to us, and I'm glad you're in a Hall of Fame, Brad. You're a very special person. Paddy, I know if John Forall was still was here, he'd say great things about you, too. God bless you, Brad Pye. Good job.
Thank you for all- Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, it's sort of an auspicious moment here with the Lakers winning and the sports being one of your passions and one of your loves. I want to thank you as a journalist to another journalist. I did 16 years of television. You are an inspiration to me. You always kept us informed and connected. You made a huge difference in all our lives. God bless you. You're an institution. Thank you for all you've done for us. Thank you.
Now, I think- now's Brad's turn?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I want to thank council member Hahn and all the nice things the other councilmen had to say about me. But in 1946 was the first- I was a 10th grader at Jefferson High School, and my civics class came to the city council. And Kenneth Hahn was on the city council at that time. And as we were leaving, he says, "Excuse me, miss, aren't you from my district?" And my teacher, Mrs. Bennett, said, "Yes." He said, "Come back in my chambers. I want to talk to your class." So we went in that room there, and Supervisor- well, was councilman at the time, talked to us about civics, and I will never forget that moment. And to receive this award presented by his daughter is so meaningful for me. You know, I always told people, there were a couple people, that if I ever was in trouble and I had one dime to call, there would be three people that I would call would be my mother, Kenneth Hahn, and Al Davis. So I want to thank you again for this wonderful honor and all these fine compliments. I hope you say something like this one at my funeral.
Congratulations to you. Thank you, Janice Hahn. Thank you. CD 12, Mr. Smith, your second presentation.
We have two city employees who have excelled, like all our city employees do, but these two have been recognized for doing something very special and something very close to my heart, certainly, in that is work with emergency preparedness. The manager of the L.A. Emergency Preparedness Division, Jim Featherstone, is being honored to receive the 2009 BICEP President's Award. Bill Robertson, the director of our L.A. Bureau of Street Services, is being honored as BICEP's 2009 Award of Excellence. BICEP is a business and industry council for emergency planning and preparedness. It was started in 1983 by Tom Bradley when he was mayor, with support in this council chamber by Hal Burnson, who was my predecessor and known throughout the land as Mr. Earthquake. The organization brings together business leaders to cooperate on disaster preparedness for businesses. BICEP was established as a private sector self-help association whose goal is to provide a forum for information exchange and to enhance emergency preparedness and continuity planning within the business community. In December 2008, Jim Featherstone, the general manager of our City of Los Angeles Emergency Management Division, EMD, implemented the University Consortium LA, a program that welcomes universities into the City of L.A.'s emergency management efforts and fosters collaboration between universities and the city. Each quarter, a campus hosts the University Consortium meeting, where the city shares resources and makes presentation on topics such as mass evacuation planning and pandemic flu preparedness. The University Consortium is supported by Cal EMA, the L.A. Emergency Preparedness Foundation, and the L.A. County Department of Health. EMD invites nearly 40 campuses in the L.A. area to participate. In addition to outreach to the universities, Jim has made great strides through working with the business community. The City of L.A. recently completed the new Emergency Operations Center, and if you have not been over there, you need to go see it, which moves the City of L.A. from a 1970s bunker-style facility we used to have across the street, four stories below the city hall, into the new, new state-of-the-art facility. It is the finest in the country. The new AC is a two-story, 84,000-square-foot facility engineered to withstand an 8.0 magnitude earthquake. To demonstrate and clarify the role of the business community during disaster response, Jim identified one of these rooms and as a committed to the Business Operations Center. This is the first of its kind and will support responses personnel from the business community across the city. This will enable the city to share real-time information with the business community during a disaster for effective and for rapid response and recovery. Jim's direct involvement in making this happen clearly shows his commitment and involvement and understanding of the business needs. Bill Robertson, somebody who's not in any way a stranger to any of us in this chamber, received the 2009 award as the Award of Excellence. Bill is the director, of course, of our City of L.A. Bureau of Street Services in the Board of Public Works and a longstanding member of the Emergency Operations Organization. Whenever the city forces are engaged in responding to a major planned event or emergency or disaster, Bill is instrumental in leading the efforts of the Bureau of Street Services. That includes such incidents as the station fire, the Sayer fire, and the huge water main breaks that we had last year, primarily in the San Fernando Valley and West L.A. Bill entered city service as an employee of the Board of Public Works in 1983 and was eventually appointed Director of Bureau of Street Services in 2002. As Director, Bill manages an occasional budget of 150, sometimes a little more, not always that good. That involves preservation of mains of more than 7,300 miles of city streets and alleys for Mr. Parks' alleys, 295 acres of landscaped traffic medians and islands in the city's urban forests, which is the largest in the nation. For his diligence and caring for the streets of Los Angeles, managing effective response to daily emergencies coming from an aging infrastructure, as well as disasters and preparedness, BICEP awards to Bill Robertson the Award of Excellence. And I know both of these gentlemen well, as I think most of you do. We have two of the best in the country when it comes to street services and emergency preparedness. We need to always be focused on emergency preparedness because whether it's preparing our streets or our citizens for emergencies, one thing is sure, you can't cut those resources and expect them to be there when you need them. They have to be there on guard 24 hours a day, seven days a week, all the time for the eventual outbreak which we know does strike L.A. And so they've done an excellent job of preparing this. They continue to do an excellent job. Both of them are excellent leaders and general managers. And where are the awards? Where are those big awards? There they are. This is the BICEP Award for Bill, and this is the BICEP Award for Jim Featherstone. Two citizens of L.A., two general managers who has done us proud, and we're proud of them, and we want to recognize you today for your excellence, and thank you for that. And first of all, Jim, would you like to say a few words? Thank you, councilmember, members of the council. Also, BICEP, thank you very much for giving us this award. This is a perfect example of a public-private partnership. We look at the relationship we have with the business organization, especially in organizations such as BICEP, as a force multiplier when things go wrong here. But the relationship that we've developed right now is steady-state, is what will make all the difference when things really go bad here in L.A. Also, in terms of working with Bill Robertson, it's a perfect example of the whole city workforce standing together and standing tall and putting their shoulder to the wheel in times of trouble. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, councilmember Smith, and certainly this is an honor, and I want to thank BICEP for this award, but more importantly, I want to thank them for what they do every single day and, Mike, your organization, the business leaders in the city, and the contribution that you make ensuring that the city is ready and prepared for any type of disaster that hits us. I want to thank you very much. And I want to thank Mr. Featherstone for his leadership. We've come a long way in bringing this city together and being able to respond to any type of emergency. And as always, Greg, thank you for your leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Hey, Mr. Smith. I just want to say, A.C. Cooper from CNN said L.A.'s number one in preparedness. Of all the- there's five cities that's going to have a big one someday soon, and we're number one, and that's because of all of you and everybody right all there. So thank you so much, Bill. Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. Zion was a little behind right there.
No, Mr. LeBons, all you got to do is push your button, and we'll be happy to acknowledge you.
I did push it.
All you got to do is push it before they complete their conversation. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And we will going to now proceed. That's- we have one more presentation, and lady hasn't arrived yet, so we will, Madam Clerk, proceed with our first item of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks, followed by, seconded by Mr. LeBons.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Keretz, seconded by Mrs. Kocorian.
Would you like to run through the agenda?
Please do. Shall we do the agenda?
There's been a request by the department to continue Item 1 to December 17.
Without objection. Item 1 to December 17.
Items 2 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. No action is required on Item 2, and reports have been submitted and distributed on Items 4, 5, 6, 7, and 18.
Are there any specials, colleagues, or any cards, Madam Clerk, on any of those items?
I believe those items have had public hearings.
All right. Any specials, colleagues? I think Mr. Smith had a special on one of these items. Mr. Smith had a special on one of the items?
Not that I'm aware of. I believe that's another item on the agenda.
Okay, very well. On those matters, no seen, no special? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Parks.
On 6 and 18?
6 and 18, fourth with, for Mr. Parks.
And Item 3, the ordinance will go over one week for a second reading.
Very well. Continue, please.
On Items 20 through 29 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. There's been a request to continue Item 23 to July 16.
Without objection. 23 will be continued to July 16. Ms. Hahn?
Can we reconsider 19 when you get a chance?
Let's continue these first. Any specials on the current items, colleagues?
There are cards on Items 21, 23, 28, and 29.
Call the one-
I'm sorry, 23 is continue.
The ones with the cards, call special, please. See no other specials? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. On the continuation agenda, Item 30 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Number 30. Mr. Cardenas?
30 special.
Special for Mr. Cardenas, number 30. Next item, please.
On Item 31, Item 31 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there is a card on that item.
Call that special, please.
And I believe councilmember Smith also- okay.
Mr. Smith wants 31?
Received and filed.
Received and filed, okay. There's a card on it. Okay, very well. All right, that takes us to Ms. Hahn. You wanted reconsideration of what?
19.
19. On 19, colleagues, please open the roll for reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And matter will be reconsidered. Madam Clerk?
That takes council back to presentations or public comment.
We'll do public comment. Those of you who are here for public comment, it's now the time for public comment. And if you're here for another item on the agenda, please fill out your card, have it turned in before the item is called. Once the item is called, there will be no further cards accepted on that item. Public comment? Dr. Clyde Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 411 Vibe Barrett Road, Elsreino, Northeast L.A. DWP. What are they doing? I don't know. I'm supposed to be a DWP liaison, but it's difficult finding out what's going on in DWP. We now have a long-term strategy, which some people call a strategic plan, after two years of Huron working on it, but it wasn't done by Huron. Then we have the fiscal year 2011 budget. But the numbers in these two documents, which are both produced by DWP, don't agree, or we can't figure it out where they are. The rates included in the strategic plan seem to differ from those in the budget, but there's a new concept. It's no longer an adjustment factor. It's a pass-through. Pass-through that is uncapped, but it's only supposed to be for fuels rather than fuels and everything else, renewables, feed-in tariffs and such. So we don't know. So I would highly recommend that you put the budget again on 245 and include a separate item for the long-term strategy that's on the face and/or a strategic plan. I reserve 30 seconds.
Thank you. Teresa Isaias, followed by John Walsh.
My name is Teresa Isaias. I'm a library clerk at Atwater Village Branch. Yesterday, we had two layoffs. Marvin Harada, a young messenger clerk who had learned a lot. Is anybody here listening to me?
I am.
Thank you. Marvin Harada, a young messenger clerk who learned a great deal, who helped out the library, the patrons a great deal, gone. Carolina Rosa, a young single mother, a clerk, a very hard worker, was laid off at 12:30 yesterday, leaving me to be the only clerk in the branch until we closed at 8:00. Carolina Rosa offered to stay till the end of the day so that I would not be alone. This is who you people laid off. And I don't understand why. And in the middle of this crisis, where's the mayor when he should be home mourning this city? He's out at a Lakers game? It's unconscionable to me. The people that were laid off yesterday were required to be escorted to the door to leave the building, like criminals, like trespassers, like pests, but not like- the building, like criminals, like trespassers, like pests, but not like valuable city workers who have served the citizens of Los Angeles, and certainly, Mr. Garcetti, wherever you are, certainly not like family.
John Walsh, followed by Erica Silverman.
John Walsh, belonging at HollywoodHighlands.org. We had a rampage last night. Do you remember when I was here Wednesday and warned you that this would happen? You sat there talking to another and didn't listen to me. On Wednesday, the mayor, on Thursday and Wednesday, the mayor and the chief said, Beck said, "It couldn't happen." Five times as many cops, psychotic ravings of John Walsh. When you held it, everything I said happened. This, look at it. Fire in the street. This destroys our image all over the world. And guess what? They handed out free energy drinks in the crowd after the victory. And what did some of the people in the crowd do? They threw it at the cops, breaking a law officer's nose. This city was out of control. And where was the mayor, as the speaker before me said? Well, he was up there for the press conference to tell us it couldn't happen. At 11:00 P.M., Beck held a press conference. It was seen on television. And where was the mayor? He was trying to get his face on national television by screwing his way, worming his way into the locker, the locker room of the winners. And I'm telling you right now, it's time for the mayor to resign. We cannot have this kind of mayor in the city. Where was he when the whole city was crazy? And what happened at the end? As usual, he went home and he screwed Channel 5. And that's all it's about. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Labonte, a comment for Mr. Labonte.
No, I'm just asking Mr. Zion if you could hear.
I can hear. It's called free speech, Mr. Labonte. Erica Silverman, followed by Tim Butcher.
It is wrong that Rosa lost her job as a library clerk yesterday. It is wrong that Erica at Arroyo Segal lost her job as an adult librarian yesterday, and Masako at Stevenson Branch. These are all people that I've worked with over the past few years and who have given their hearts and souls to our branches and to our patrons. It is wrong at this time when the city needs the digital, the bridge of the digital divide most. It is wrong when the city needs access to information, to good information, most. It is wrong when our children need children services most, that this library system is being decimated. We know that this is just the beginning, and it is wrong that when the city council goes to the bargaining table, they are not doing it in good faith, that they have an agenda to bust this union. And it is wrong that you are not listening to us and working with us, and it is wrong for us to keep coming here week after week and talking to you as if we are engaging in a democratic process when you clearly have an agenda. I urge you to go back to the bargaining table in good faith and do right by the library and do right by the city and the patrons of our libraries who deserve our best library services, which we won't be able to deliver as you decimate and demolish this system. I beg you.
Thank you. Timothy Butcher, followed by Michael Hubman. Michael Hubman after Timothy Butcher.
The mayor of this city hates children. He hates families. Do you? I put it to you. These decisions, these cuts, are hitting children the hardest. We're going into summertime. Children need to go to Wreckin' Park facilities for daycare. What, they're closed? Oh, okay. I'll have my kid go to the library down the street then. Whoops. Consider what you're doing. We have come to you in good faith. We have taken cuts. We've given you revenue. We've given you ideas, efficiencies. We've met with you, tried to solve the problems. We will continue to do so as long as you are willing. We will help you to find a way out of this. Together, we can find a way out of this. The city, just like an individual, will be judged by what they do and not by what they say. Will the legacy of this city be a police state or a city that has public services, libraries, culture, arts, taking, programs to take care of their children? To those of you that have worked with us, you can ignore my comments. You guys have already figured it out. To those of you that have not, please consider, there's still time. To kind of change subjects, a technical question. What is Phil gonna do? Can they make the ring into a toe ring or something? I mean, I don't know, but go Lakers. Thank you.
Michael Hubman, followed by David Meyer.
Good morning. For over five years, there's been a food line at Town Avenue and Sixth Street. At 5:00 P.M. in the fall and winter, and 6:00 in the spring and summer, over 100 homeless people would line up for a modest meal. With no help from government, the volunteers from World Agape Christian Center would show up to provide this free meal to the homeless. They performed this service six days a week without fail. They would feed the homeless people in an orderly and sanitary manner and then pick up any litter. All this was accomplished for an entire five-year run with never a complaint about the quality or sanitation of the food. On June 2nd, 2010, homeless people were not the only ones waiting around for World Agape volunteers to arrive. Also waiting were an agent from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, a high-ranking officer from the Los Angeles Police Department, and a representative from Councilmember Perry's office. Also in attendance were the red shirts. They allowed the volunteers to set up and begin serving the meal. Then the Los Angeles County Health Officer moved in and cited the leader, Wu, with an official notice of violation. Here's the language that was handwritten on that violation. "You are hereby directed by this department to comply with the following. It is unlawful to prepare and sell slash give away to the public," observed, "soup, yogurt, cooked potatoes, soy milk, comma, give away to the public, period. Stop at once. Give away food to the public." This was an unglorious end to a five-year run of selfless service to the underclass and homeless people of Skid Row, Los Angeles. The volunteers operated in a quiet manner, asking nothing from government while performing a mission of mercy. These volunteers operated along a blank wall with no doors, windows, gates, or driveways. Shame. My name is Michael Hubman. I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist.
David Meyer, followed by Candido Mares.
Yes, thank you. I'm David Meyer. I'm with the Library of Congress Veterans History Project. I thank Councilman Labonte's office for being in dialogue with me. Los Angeles Public Library has given me a place twice a month since 2006 to interview veterans of World War II, and I've saved 60 to 80 stories. I'm here because I'm also an enrolled agent with the Department of the Treasury, and I would point the council's attention to the March 1st, 2010 Controllers Report on revenue. I understand the library must be cut if it's a choice between the library and the fire department. However, that's based on revenue being stated correctly. If you look at the, if you look at the revenue from parking fines, 2009, 2010, 134 million. Parking fines, 2010 to 2011, the same, 134 million. I challenge you to ask any of your neighbors if they have gotten a parking ticket. Ask them if the parking ticket's gone down or it's stayed the same. The second item is more complex. It's license permits, fees, and fines. In 2009, 2010, that figure was 670 million. 2010, 2011, it has gone down, $40 million to 630 million. I state that if you look at the people who've gotten, not parking tickets, but speeding fines, that amount has gone up. If we state these amounts correctly, we have enough to save the library. We have enough. We won't have this argument, what to be saved, what not to be, because the library is like the canary in the coal mine. If the library is okay, the city's okay. I ask the council to look at these two items through a mid-year, mid-year audit.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Candido Mares. Candido, followed by Sarah Richardson.
Good morning, Mr. President, Councilman Zion and Councilman. My name is Candido Mares, and I'm here again to proclaim that I live in the greatest city and the greatest country in the world. And yes, the Lakers are part of that, but more importantly, then the Lakers are the people of this great city, like those city workers and those union people that are here today to fight for those people that have lost their jobs. I hope, Mr. President, councilmembers, that you'll do everything to restore those jobs. I've always said that I believe that we have the talent, the ability, but do we have the will? And in the past year, I think I've seen a lot of that will take place. It's also the people like Mr. Clyde Williams, Dr. Williams, who's been fighting with DWP for many years. I've been there and fighting DWP, but now the neighborhood councils are there, and we're making changes at DWP. So, again, I hope that you'll take the time to really listen to the people of this great city, because as great as the Lakers are, and we should honor them for their greatness, the people of this great city are our greatest assets. Thank you, Mr. President.
After Sarah Richardson, we will have Ivan Chavez.
Good morning. I would just like to call upon each council member to please pay attention. I am an employee of the City of Los Angeles, and I'm also a resident of the City of Los Angeles. In this hard economic time, we are struggling financially in our personal budgets. Any further increases in DWP rates, we can no longer afford. And I really would like to call upon you that this is an urgent matter. We're already suffering financially from the furlough days and lack of overtime or no overtime, and then now we have to pay more to DWP. You can't squeeze blood from a turnip. We cannot afford any more DWP rate increases. Please, please, please do not approve any more rate increases for DWP. Thank you.
Mr. Chavez, followed by Laura Dawn.
My name is Ivan Corpino Chavez, and I'm a retired employee of the city. I'm a retired employee of the city, Ivan Ari Corpino Chavez, and I'm here not to talk to you, I'm here to talk to my fellow employees. What you have done is, it's really unspeakable. So, I'm addressing myself to them as, you know, it's not enough to be confused, it's not enough to be sad, it's not enough to be angry, it's not enough to act. We must act together. It was not enough to act, we have to act with a plan, and it's not enough to have a plan, but we must succeed. And I promise you, we are going to act, and you're gonna know we're going to act. Okay? And I'm telling my fellow coworkers, you know, we must act together. We must force our unions, your labor partners, to act, because they have been too passive up until now. They have been too passive. They have been following whatever you want, they have done. And you know what? That's why we're here. That's how we arrived at this situation. Our union leadership has been responsible because it has been responsive to you and not to the membership. Well, you know what? The membership is tired. Our friends were laid off, very humiliatingly, were laid off yesterday, and everybody's been suffering for over a year, the humiliation of being called deadwood, you know, unnecessary, a drag on the city budget, being blamed for the budget, asking for concessions. Now, the ones who remain, they're going to have to make salary concessions and benefit concessions and retirement concessions if you get your way and if your labor partners, you know, continue the way they are going. Well, you know what? Some of us have had enough. Okay, so again, I tell my fellow coworkers, you know, it's over. Time for talk is over. We must act. We must act together. We must have a plan, and we must succeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura Dawn, followed by Roy Stone.
Good morning, Laura Dawn, a recently retired librarian. I did not ever really believe that this would happen, that you would actually lay off library employees. We met, we negotiated, we gave back salary, we gave back furlough, we offered extra furlough days, and still, the acts fell. If there's ever been a department that scrimped and saved and saved pennies and came in under budget and under time, on time, it was the library. We cut up memos for scratch paper. We sharpen and re-sharpen donated pencils. We patch books and glue them and tape them together to make them last just a little bit longer. We spend our own money on crafts for kids for storytimes and craft projects, and still the acts fell. And so now, if you can get to a library when it's open, you will have long lines, you will not be able to find the books, there will be no programs, kids will be wandering and milling, bathrooms will be filthy, outsides will be covered with graffiti, because the staff that takes care of this is gone. They're on the streets, those who relied on their library paycheck, meager as it was, to pay the rent, to feed their families, to put themselves through school, are now collecting unemployment. So, go Lakers? Well, fine. A couple of days, a big parade that's going to cost the city some more money, but no libraries is going to have an impact that's going to last and affect the education of this city for years.
Roy Stone. Ms. Perry? Mr. Stone, hold on a second. Ms. Perry?
Mr. President, I just wanted to respond to the comment that was just made about the city paying for the parade, because I don't want this rumor to start. It's inaccurate. The Laker Organization has offered to pay for the cost of the parade, and this will not be at any city expense. So, I don't, this is how rumors get started and wrong information gets out there and the airwaves. So, just to correct the record on that, again, the Laker Organization will be paying for the entire cost of the parade and celebration this coming Monday. So, just wanted to correct the record on that.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Stone? Mr. Stone?
It is, it is a black day in the City of Los Angeles, and it will be a black day in every community as long as the city council accedes to the mayor and the CAO's efforts to destroy library service. We asked you to look at the unfair and inappropriate amount of cuts for the library department. It was way out of proportion. The same for recreation and park services. Did anyone look at why that is there? People here have said, you know, that the mayor doesn't like children and families, and that is the appearance. But that is not the real black day, that's the services. It's the communities that are going to suffer, and it is now the hundred and more people, 200 people who are laid off, fired from their jobs. I fired an excellent librarian yesterday, a messenger clerk yesterday, two more today, and that's happening throughout the city. Services are being hurt. People are going to be unemployed, out of homes. These people have worked for the city for many, many years, and now they are going to be on the street. I've received numerous calls. This was my job. This was my life. It was my career. Part-time work. I lived in the house with my sister. This is what we did to get by. I now have half the paycheck to pay the rent. We won't be able to pay the rent. So, we do have money for the SIM group. We have money to provide for tax breaks for lots of other private companies. I do not understand why the city council will allow the mayor to create this kind of havoc in our communities. I ask you, please, to review why this is going to, why it's happened now, do something about it now, work with the coalition in these last days, because next year, the mayor's going to come back and do further cuts on the library, because that's his goal. It's clear in the Financial Sustainability Report created by the CAO. And if you don't analyze that carefully, we won't have library service anywhere in your communities.
Judy Donovan, followed by Linda Torn.
I tried to save a job when I took the early retirement. Didn't help, didn't help a bit. And I'm here to speak to you guys, for the employees from the library, and also recognizing the Wreckin' Parks employees who got the notice yesterday. the Wreckin' Parks employees who got the notice yesterday. And they got it, unfortunately, some of them received it with the same indifference that this city council and mayor have looked at all of our concessions to save these jobs. They were given their pink slips, their packets, and told to leave immediately, walked to the door and told, "Don't come back." Unfortunately, you know, it's a public building, they should have been able to come back, they should have been hugged at the door when they left. You guys didn't do that. You kicked them out. You know, thank you guys. Remember, these people have homes and tuition and family, but then you already decided, you know, that you don't need daycare, you don't need service, library service. You know, look at the U.S. and the Slovakia soccer game and watch the refereeing. The quality of the refereeing, remind me of the quality of this council denying a winning U.S. goal so that, you know, just like you deny the concessions that we have been willing to give you. Check your refereeing, I don't think it's very good. Thank you.
Linda Torn, followed by Walter Bectel.
Isn't it great that the Lakers won last night? But great teams are not enough to make a world-class city. We need to restore the cuts to the libraries. This is a horrible situation and I wonder if any of you have been to your local library or central library recently. I also would like it if somebody would at least make eye contact and act like they're listening. I've watched you, you know, I've watched these on TV and the camera looks at the speaker and doesn't look at all of you. I wonder if you would look at the speakers if you knew the cameras were on you. But anyway, we need to restore these cuts. If you go to central library or to your local library, you will hear wonderful speakers, great authors, you will see great presentations. The local libraries are full of kids doing class projects, they're working, they're using the computers. People who don't know anything about computers can get free tutoring, you can rent free, get free DVDs. The libraries are full of people, cutting them back is a horrible thing. I've been a resident of Los Angeles for over 30 years, I'm a UCLA graduate, everybody that, you know, most of you probably don't even know people now who use the library, but if you talk to the workers of this city, they and their kids use these libraries. They are vital. I also want to talk about the cuts to the other licensed child services. It's horrible that you're cutting that. We can't have a strong, vital city unless we take care of our working families, of the children, of the elderly. All of these people use the libraries. And I must say, I'm also a patron of the library, I use it as well, and I think that you should all visit a library. You should make it a point for you and your staffs to go visit a library before these horrible cuts, before you really notice how horrible they are so you'll see what you're doing. Thank you.
Walter Bectel, followed by Elsie Barrera.
I want to talk today about misinformation over the airwaves. Was anybody listening to KNX early yesterday morning on the radio? What was it, the chief of police or somebody in the LAPD got up there and said, and I quote, "After we win the game tonight," unquote. I think that was interesting. How did he know that we were going to win the game well before it happened? I didn't think of anything of it until I started watching some of the game and some of the very suspicious things that happened, like when Kobe had committed an offensive foul, but he got the three-pointer as if somebody had fouled him. And I was thinking, why would anybody want to do that? Why wouldn't anybody want to throw the game? I mean, I can see why the LAPD may be. I mean, it would minimize the potential for riot if we won the game as opposed to losing it. But if you were putting money on the game, if you were betting on the side, that certainly would be a, what do you say, a positive or a potential for investment. If you knew well ahead of the game whether or not you were going to win, then you could put as much money on the game well before it began. Now, I don't know who would have benefited from it. I don't think they're going to tell you who they were. But again, if you go over the KNX, I'm sure it's still on the KNX site there and you can log in there and go over the recording. It says quite certainly, the chief said, or whoever the officer was, he said, and I quote, "After we win the game tonight," unquote.
Thank you.
You'll be our final speaker, ma'am. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Elise Barrera. I'm a young adult librarian in the Hollywood area of the city. I work in Councilmember Garcia's district. I was born and raised in Councilmember Coretza's district. And I want to ask you respectfully to never, ever insult us by calling us your family ever again. Because in families, when there is a financial crisis, everybody cuts, everybody scrimps, everybody saves. When was the last time you took a mandatory furlough day? When was the last time you had to look at one of your employees and fire them to their face and escort them out the door? They're not allowed in the public area of the library even? One of our MCs was fired. He didn't have a ride home, so they told him to get out of the building and wait outside. That's what they did yesterday. And the fact that you all can't even look at us in the face, can't even do us that respect. 160 people were fired from the library, 100 positions, but those 60 MC positions were part-time only. That was 120 people. 160 people you fired yesterday. Don't sit up there and act like the Lakers winning was something good yesterday. When our mayor didn't respect us, when you didn't respect us. Work on it. If you want to cut yourselves as well, then we would respect you. But you haven't taken a pay cut, you haven't taken a time cut, and you haven't done anything in your offices. Work on this.
That completes our public comment. Mr. and Ms. Labonge, you have a comment, sir?
No, I have some students here and I think it's good that you saw this robust discussion. Although they use the term family as city employees, all of us had to make sacrifices in a variety way. They had to make great sacrifices. We're in a challenging time. I do want to welcome these students from California, throughout California. Please rise and be recognized by the city council of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. And I know you're proud of it.
And thank you, Ms. Labonge.
Mr. Zion, I thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry? Presentation or comment or both?
That's fine.
Ms. Perry for a presentation.
Wilma Hunter, come forward, please, and Mr. Jerry Miller. Where's your daughter?
Oh, she's not in my sister's camp.
All right, your sister's here. Okay, Sharon? Sharon, are you going to come up here too? Okay. I just told Ms. Wilma Hunter, oh no, you are not crying. Now, if you know Wilma, I've known Wilma for a long time. I worked with her when we worked for Mrs. Walters in the 9th District and she was the executive assistant to Mrs. Walters for three years. Yes. Now, Wilma is famous for a few things. Apparently, she's always famous for having peanuts and pistachios to hand out to people she likes. And she's got a look. And it's the glasses down the nose and the eyes over the glasses and she can stop anything with that look. And so, you know, you learn early on to adjust your demeanor and your presentation to Ms. Hunter so that you can accomplish your goals. And so I am happy for her that she has chosen to retire and I just want to tell you a few interesting facts about her. She attended Manuel Arts High School, so she is a graduate of 9th District High School. She went to LA City College and East Los Angeles College, Pasadena City College. She has two wonderful children, Bianca, who many of you have seen over the years here in City Hall, and her son Roderick. She started her career here in the City of Los Angeles in 1974 as a senior clerk typist in a CETA program in the Personnel Department. And from then, her career grew. She moved to medical services as a senior clerk typist. She became a principal clerk back in 1989 for the chief legislative analyst at the time. And then she became an executive assistant to Councilwoman Walters in 1991 through 1994. She then went back to the chief legislative analyst's office and grew from there and was promoted. And many of you knew her as the gatekeeper and first point of contact for our current chief legislative analyst, Jerry Miller. And I have to say firsthand, she's done an excellent job. Wilma has a good heart, keen intellect, she's sharp, she's quick, and she's completely dedicated when she takes on a task. There is no deterring her. And now, your peers in your own office wrote this, so they said they would miss your peanuts and pistachios, but they also said the office of the chief legislative analyst will not be the same without the quote, "the look," end quote. And then they did say you have a delightful sense of humor and a no-nonsense approach to life, which is all true, and it brightened our days and you will be deeply, deeply missed. And for your years of dedicated service, I personally want to say thank you and you better not cry. And your boss is going to come up here and say a few words, too. Mr. Jerry Miller.
Well, I have to, I have to tell you, I don't know what I'm going to do without Wilma. She has been, she has been incredible. I couldn't have done it without her. She's a joy to work with. Anytime things look like they're getting to be too much, woman knows just exactly what to say to make me laugh. And we've had a great partnership over the years and I'm going to miss her terribly, but I wish her the best in her retirement and I hope I don't see her walking around the neighborhood in her bathrobe and slippers from now on.
Okay, Ms. Hunter, this is your moment.
Wilma Hunter, this is your life.
I'd like to thank the academy. Oops, wrong thing, wrong thing, wrong thing. I'd like to thank, I'd like to say how happy I've been working for the city for the last 34 years. I've enjoyed it, but most of all, I've enjoyed the last 21 years in the UCLA's office. I'd like to thank my coworkers and I'd like to thank the council assistants, your assistants, who made my job so much easier. They were always nice and great with me when I needed a last-minute appointment for Jerry with you. I'd like to thank Leno Zawa, you know, I didn't work with her too long, Karen, and June Gibson and Sharon. I'd like to thank Sharon. She has always been a sweetheart and she was the only person that knew where Phillips' barbecue was when I brought it out. So, you know, it takes a great person to know that. And then I'd like to thank Jerry. Jerry has been very good to me. He's been kind, considerate. We developed an unspoken rhythm which made me happy to come to work every day. I never said, "Oh, I got to go to work," you know, a lot of it. I enjoy coming to work, but after 34 years, it's time to go. I'd like to thank my sister Helen Hardy for coming from San Diego with me today. And I just like, I'm going to get political for a minute. It's okay, Jerry. My father started with the city in the 50s and my mother was a housewife. There were six of us. And through his job with the city, he was able to raise a lawyer, an executive, two managers, myself, and my younger brother is the head coach of New Mexico State University. Go Aggies! And I said that to say that when you do the budget next year, please work very hard to save as many jobs as you can. Because you never know what an employee's child can do if that parent has a job. So please, next year, try and save as many jobs as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Wilma. Congratulations to you. 34 dedicated years. Thank you. Okay, that completes our presentations. Madam Clerk, number five, please send that forth with. And let's begin with the remaining items, please.
For the record also, item three, the ordinance actually was adopted on that item. Next item is item 19 called Special for Councilmember Hahn and amending motion has been submitted and distributed to the council.
Councilmember Hahn, we have one card on number 19, Mr. Arnold Sacks.
Oh. Okay.
I only see one. Arnold Sacks, number 19. If there's another card on that, I haven't seen it.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. These enterprise zones that are being established and expanded, will they include any kind of vesting, vetting, as occurred with the commercial zone regarding AEG where the permits for signage for advertising magically appeared even though the agency, the public, not Public Works, the agency that was, that needs to give the permission for the permits, Department of Building and Safety wasn't involved in any of the meetings. So when people want to look to see what occurs with this enterprise zone, is there a list of the committees and agencies that are involved in granting this free enterprise zone? Thank you.
Candido Marais. We did find your card, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. I appreciate that. Ms. Hunter, the lady that just retired, that's the type of city employee that we have here. It's unbelievable. I want to thank her for her comments about the future of the city and making sure that we try to make sure that we don't fire any more people. But in regards to the enterprise zones, the enterprise zones create jobs, stimulate the economy. I was part of the enterprise zone off of 17th and Central for many years and it helped our business, so I hope that we'll reestablish this. I would like to know, though, in the 2nd District, Mr. Corian, you have an enterprise zone that ends roughly below Sherman Way. It should be extended all the way to Victory. You have companies that are in the movie industry, there's so many jobs there that if we were to extend it down to Victory, I believe that we could really create a lot more jobs in that area. So again, enterprise zones are good for the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, number 19, ma'am.
Thank you. Could we have somebody from CDD? Oh, hi. Colleagues, this is an item that is relative to the status of the city's application to reestablish the Harbor State Enterprise Zone and expansion of the Los Angeles Hollywood State Enterprise Zone. And basically, as you know, we were granted by the state several areas of the city that came under the enterprise zone policy. And when you're a part of an enterprise zone, there's a lot of incentives for business, there's hiring credits, there's sales and tax credits, there's expense and interest deductions. And on the city's part, we give electric rate discounts, reduced parking requirements, and sewage facility charge payment plans. So part of being an enterprise zone is obviously to give good incentives to businesses, it's positive. We really were appreciative of the fact that we were in the Harbor Enterprise Zone. Many businesses, I think, came and located as a result of that and then were able to prosper even in tough economic times because of the incentives that were available through this enterprise zone. Unfortunately, we were not granted an extension of this enterprise zone, so it obviously was very disappointing to many of us. And I was going to ask you... And I was going to ask you to tell us about reapplying for this enterprise zone and tell us what are our chances of being awarded this. Maybe you can tell us why we were denied it in the last round. Quickly, because you're on my time.
Thank you. Robert Science, Assistant General Manager, CDD. Yes, the state enterprise zone is one of the few state incentives for businesses, and it's a very big tool for economic development throughout the city. We have had the expansion happen, which is about 15% over the last few years. Unfortunately, the San Pedro area was the one that was denied. We are applying. The application is due September 15th. We're putting all of our resources behind it, working with planning, building and safety, and all other city departments, including City Attorney, to have the application in.
Do you have an understanding of why we were denied and what you're going to change in the application this time?
There was two areas that we were ranked relatively low.
I'm having a hard time hearing.
Colleagues, there were many conversations taking place in the chambers, and it's difficult to hear, Ms. Hahn. So, all the sidebar conversations with staff, please take it to the side or the back of the room or outside the chambers. It's mostly staff that's carrying on these conversations. Sergeant Arms, can you please quiet staff down? Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Can I have some of my time back for that?
There were over 15 applications that came in statewide. We were ranked number four, and they only awarded two. But the two areas was...the two areas that we were ranked low was the income in the San Pedro area was higher than the average income of the winning applications, substantially higher. And then, secondly, was the areas, in terms of the commercial areas, and being able to the San Pedro, such a mix of residential and commercial. So, we're refining our application this year to very specifically capture a higher proportion of business and commercial, and also on the income area to exclude the higher income areas as much as we can. But we have to meet all their regulations, and just that San Pedro is a tough area, high need in some areas and low need in others.
Can you tell me, once you apply for this, how long you think it will take till we hear whether or not we've been granted?
Yeah, we heard directly from the state, so that they're going to have decisions before the end of the year, so in December is when they're looking to do.
Colleagues, one of the things I'm going to introduce today is a motion that, as far as it is up to us, the city, for some of these incentives, I would like for us to continue in these enterprise zone areas, a continuation of the city incentives, which are reduced parking requirements, the electric rate discount, and the sewer facility charge payment plan, until we hear whether or not we've been granted by the state the full enterprise zone incentives. So, I think that would be a good way during, again, these tough times, that we can continue, from the city's point of view, to offer these kinds of incentives. So, we'll remain in enterprise zone as far as the city incentives are considered.
That'd be a great thing.
You think that's a good idea?
Yeah, that's a great thing.
Okay, good. So, we'll do that today, and then hopefully, your application will be one that will be approved at the state level. These enterprise zones are really a terrific tool that we can partner with the state in helping our businesses through these tough times and attract more businesses to come to these zones. And as far as the city's concerned, I think we can still do some things to provide those incentives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate, Ms. Hahn, your leadership on that and also wanting the room quiet so we could keep the dialogue going. We're in the process of doing an enterprise zone in my district, which we're thrilled about. That includes Century Corridor, includes a couple of the bids we have in Westchester. So, since we're in the beginning stages of it, how do you see us implementing what we need to do?
There's actually three different areas to focus on. One is on the workforce training, which is not particular to the state enterprise zone, but we actually did through the airport ordinance. So, we are and have kicked that off over the last six to eight months. The second is, we do have a specific staff member that'll be working with the businesses and the various bids to inform the businesses of the actual state enterprise zone and all the incentives that go as a part of it. And then, third, is that we already have approval for the expansion, and that approval has been granted to us by the state. So, we're able to actually implement the zone.
That's very exciting. And of course, we have 240 acres of Lawa land that's under this, as well as pieces of Westchester. How will we get out the word that it's incented with tax incentives, with, as Ms. Hahn was saying, parking incentives? Are we going to list them? What is our strategy to encourage businesses to come in?
Yeah, we work very specifically with the Chamber of Commerce, all the local business communities. We do some small advertising in terms of what budget will allow. We also actually have a staff member that we dedicate as a part of the requirements for the state enterprise zone. So, that staff member will be specifically working in your area.
Have we looked at other ones in the state that the governor's been able to put together and how effective they've been?
Yes, yes.
Because I know Austin Butner was with the governor, and that had something to do with the positive quickness with which my particular area got included.
Right, right. We worked together with the mayor's office on putting together the application for the expansion, and Mr. Butner was very instrumental in getting it approved quickly through the state.
Okay, my last question is, LAUSD and the other schooling, community colleges, so forth, so forth. We're wanting to have a conference center on Century Boulevard area so that the hotels aren't just transit hotels to get on planes, but also a go-to location for smaller events than going downtown. How does this fit within the enterprise zone concept?
Yeah, this is very complimentary. We've been discussing the idea with the Community College District for the last couple of years, using prop J dollars to build the conference center right on Century. Those discussions are still ongoing, being able to find the right piece of property to actually build the center. They do have money for the capital improvements, but it's really about finding the right piece of property to do.
Okay, because I know we, the voters, voted yes, and therefore, they have the money, and they're going forward with it. Is there anything my office can do to speed this up so we can get something happening?
I'm not specifically lead on that, but I do know Marvin Martinez from the County College District, who is the lead, and we can follow back up with your office to see exactly what that...
Whatever I can do to help accelerate that and get that relationship going so that the hotels and the community there feel we're actually moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn?
You know, I obviously was focused on the Harbor Area Enterprise Zone because that's the area I represent. But how many other enterprise zones in the city are in that same situation where they currently are an enterprise zone and then have been denied, you know, a continuation? Are we just the only one?
Unfortunately, you're the only one. The other two that we got reapproved, actually an expansion, was the Los Angeles Hollywood and also the East Side. So, we were very successful on that.
Okay, good. Because I was just having second thoughts. I was thinking I was very selfish just extending incentives for the Harbor area, but if there were others, then this motion should certainly include other enterprise zones. But if we're the only one that got denied, then my motion makes sense.
Yeah, and we've been working very specifically with the state, and they encourage us to follow this path rather than...
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, that matter is now before us. Colleagues, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please. Before we do that, 15, 16, and 17 request to go forth with. 15, 16, and 17, please. Next item.
Item 19 was adopted as amended. Next item is item 21, called Special for Cards.
Dr. Williams, number 21, followed by Arnold Sacks and John Walsh. Go ahead, sir.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, but also a member of the Water Committee of the Sierra Club. The easement, what is it for? It's for building an airport. Why? Because Inyo County wants to have an airport expansion. I've used the airport. It's quite all right for most civil aviation activities. However, why are we giving it away for $5,000 for 25 years? Seems a little excessively restrained compared to what's going on today here. So, I'd highly recommend that you reconsider and jump it up to maybe $500,000 so that you can get some decent return on the investment that we've held it for so long. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnold Sacks, followed by John Walsh.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. This property that's for the easement, DWP property, so I was wondering, do they get...do they have to pay tax for their property in Inyo County? Because according to what happens in LA County, they don't...or the city, they don't pay property tax on their property. They make lump-sum payments to the city. So, it would be interesting to find out for the public because, according to the last budget, they couldn't make their final payment, $70 million, because they needed a rate increase, which wasn't part of the budget. Just found out in yesterday's newspaper that the library is going to have to pay DWP fees for their usage, going to cost almost $28 million between that and their pension payments. So, this property tax, again, source of income for the city. Everybody says that DWP pays lower...charges lower rates than other utilities. But if they don't pay property tax, that's like AEG creates a lot of jobs, but they don't pay any fees to the city. They haven't paid public safety fees in 10 years. They're not going to pay a bed tax for 20 years. That's 30 years they're not paying fees. So, if you're not paying fees, then you have money to spend, but not your money, city money. But we have the overseer, the city council, who allow this stuff to go on. So, again, property tax. Do they...or do they not pay property tax in other counties? It'd be interesting to know. But Brown Act says you don't have to discuss that because that would clarify a situation like the parade was clarified. Don't want to start any rumors here, not in city council.
John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. One-half million successful server requests in the past six months. This...I have to echo everything that Dr. Williams said, my friend Clyde, about giveaways of property. I ask you, incidentally, if you want to start a dialogue on this or anything I say at the meetings, email me at HollywoodDems@gmail.com. Hollywood and then Dems, D-E-M-S, at gmail dot com. Anything you have to say about this or anything else, one minute. Thank you.
Thank you. That matter is now before us, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 28, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, number 28, sir.
You know, the first time I came to Hollywood was 1966, visited the Hollywood Walk of Fame. It's as popular now as it was before, but it's falling apart. It's so bad in front of the Pantages, Betty Davis star, that Building and Safety makes them put up a cone because people are tripping and falling on the star. That's how bad it is. As far as Randy Newman, in fact, his brother, Bill Newman, is an educator, LAUSD teacher, and he watches city council all the time. Randy Newman is an excellent choice, but take a look at what the Boulevard looks like, the disrepair on the stars, and then email us at HollywoodDems@gmail.com. And at least we didn't have the riots spread to Hollywood. I'm proud of the drunks in Hollywood. We didn't riot. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. That matter is before us, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 29, called Special for Councilmember Weezer, and there are cards on that item.
Number 29, Councilmember Weezer, we have three cards. You'd like to hear from them first, sir? John Walsh. Arnold Sacks and Dr. Williams.
This is a trifecta. Remember, I'm not going to take the full two minutes. I think you understand what's going on. No one here wants to talk about last night's riot, so there's no way I can make you talk about it. Just look at the pictures. That's all you have to do. This issue concerns posting budgetary information from the three proprietary websites, proprietary websites, DWP Harbor, Lawa, Lawa. This is an excellent idea. As you know, this was the Weezer and Hahn's idea. We'd just like to say thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org, HollywoodDems, H-O-L-L-Y, the O-D, and then another, D-E-M-S, at gmail dot com. And take a look what everybody is avoiding in the city. A riot, but the rest of America is talking about it. Everybody's talking about the riot that went on. And thank for the reporters and the photographers who risked their lives to take these pictures. LA is out of control. Get rid of the mayor. Give him another job as an ambassador, Mr. Obama. Thank you.
Arnold Sacks, followed by Dr. Williams.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. This is certainly a fascinating bit of information here. Budgets for the proprietary departments. Have you seen the budget for the LAX and the renovations they're doing? First, it was $3 million. Then it was $8 million. Then it was...no, excuse me. $3 million, $5 million, $8 million. Have you seen the work that was done at LAX? First, there was a midfield concourse, then there was no midfield concourse. There's a Tom Bradley extension to the Tom Bradley Terminal. Budgeted, budgeted, budgeted. $41 million for architectural drawings, not a...60% of which didn't come true. But we don't have a green line. How about a budget there? And let's talk about the DWP. Rob Jeepers, you just had him in here. They just talked about, "Oh, we can't pay for our money that was budgeted last year for this fiscal year. Budgeted for the fiscal year, we can't pay it because we need a rate increase." So, what good is posting a budget if they can't pay the money? And let's not forget the harbor. I remember going to a committee meeting. They were going to have $70 million for a piece of equipment to scan containers. Well, a $70 million piece of equipment was never bought, and the $70 million, they're still looking for that. $70 million here, $50 million there, $30 million here. How much is the city budget...how much is the city deficit? And the money just keeps rolling over the edge, falling off a cliff like Niagara Falls. But I forgot, city council members who have been sitting here, some of the...most of them going second and third terms, have got it under control. Just go to a budget and finance committee meeting. They'll tell you. And just go clarify all the information here in city council. I've got a suggestion regarding the parade. Let the city pay for the parade and AEG pay for the library.
Thank you, Arnold Sacks. Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno. Why have this at all? In fact, one time, we looked at the budget, and we were tracking the budget through DWP, but it first came on the city's website rather than being on the DWP's website. Although DWP has an MOU with many neighborhood councils that they're supposed to give us timely notification, like 90 days' worth to respond to it. So, it seems ludicrous to put DWP onto the city's website. Just put a webpage address. Make it simple. It's not necessary to have the budget document, and which one? Is it the Long-Term Strategy Budget? Or is it the Budget Fiscal Year 11? So, just put the address. Link it. It's standard practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion before us is a motion requesting our proprietary departments to put their budgets up on the web. The idea came about through the ECAF discussion when the public who was calling my office couldn't get information about... couldn't get information about DWP's budget. One of the most easiest ways nowadays to get information is to go on the web. Unfortunately, it was nowhere to be found. So in the hopes of having a more transparent budget and having the public have the information they would like so that they could see where the money is going and coming from DWP, this motion requests that the DWP and the other proprietary departments post their budgets online. After the introduction of this motion, DWP has since posted their ten-eleven budget on their website and the city homepage. The harbor has included their budget on their website but have yet to put it on the city's page. And I think there's some discussions to do that. The airport has not included their budget on any website, but we are in discussions to see if that is possible and when they can do that. So colleagues, I ask that we still pass this request to the airport department, who can hopefully post their items, their budgets, on the web so that the public has access to this information.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Matters before us for a vote. Colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Item thirty, called Special For Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas, number thirty, sir.
I think Councilmember Bernard was going to lead on this.
Mr. Parks?
And I'll go second. I'll push my button.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Can we have the CAO personnel come up on the trans? Colleagues, there are two issues that we want to explore in the sense of dealing with the trans as the staff is coming up. One, clearly, there's a need for the trans. It pretty well mirrors the amount from last year. There's one-point-two-billion dollars that we're moving forward on. The issue of what it's being used for is cash flow for the first several months of the year and then roughly about a seven-hundred-million-dollar allocation for our two pension plans, of which we received something in the neighborhood about a twenty-six-million-dollar savings for paying it upfront. And so that's the one issue. The second issue that came up in committee is the issue we're going to pass out to you, a motion that was done in '08 that talks about the lawsuit that the city's currently involved in with a number of the underwriting firms. And some of these firms have been offered up as underwriters on this issue. So we can go with... start with item, part one of it, and ask Natalie to run us through the issue of the trans in general, what we're trying to accomplish. And also, if there's any question, then we'll go to the second part.
Hato Seo. We're requesting to issue up to one-point-two-billion of short-term tax revenue anticipation notes. And we will use the trans proceeds to pay for the annual contribution to the Fire and Police Pension Fund, which is approximately three-hundred-eighty-seven-million dollars in July. Also, we will pay for the city's annual contribution to the Los Angeles City Employee Retirement System in the amount of approximately three-hundred-thirty-nine-million in July. And also, to provide four-hundred-fifty-million dollars to the city for short-term cash flow needs that occur early in the fiscal year when certain taxes and revenues have not been received. Currently, we're estimating a net interest cost of sixteen-point-nine-million dollars with a net savings of nine-point-seven-million dollars. And that is because of the discount we received when we paid the annual contributions in July. And that discount is twenty-six-point-three-million dollars.
Again, could you just... you may have covered it because I got distracted. Just to go through the exact dollars amount on the pension?
For the Fire and Police Pension Fund, it's approximately three-hundred-eighty-seven-million dollars. And for the Los Angeles City Employee Retirement System, it is approximately three-hundred-thirty-nine-million dollars.
Do you have a sense of the increase over recent times of... on pension payments? What they have risen to? Or what percentage increase have we shown over the last five to ten years or so?
It's definitely... I mean, from Natalie B. Seo's office, from last year to this year, we did see an increase. Maybe we don't have the exact dollars in front of us. We'd have to get back to you on that. But there has been a substantial increase in the rate applied to pensions.
Okay. Would it be comparable to what we've just experienced, I believe, in ten years? About a hundred percent increase in medical costs? Are we in that range? Or is it significantly below that?
Last year, our pension contributions altogether were six-hundred-and-ninety-eight. And this year, they're seven-hundred-and-forty for both systems.
Okay. Do we have any sense of over the last several years?
That they've gone up substantially.
Yeah.
And that's why we do the trans, because it saves us almost twenty-five-million dollars, twenty-six-million dollars.
We said... can you give us kind of a figure of what substantially means in comparison? I mean, is it twenty percent? Is it forty percent? Or do we have any idea?
I don't know that offhand.
Okay. And colleagues, on the issue, clearly, there's a necessity that we must move forward on the trans. The key issue is, I'm going to ask them to go into phase two. And Natalie, did you provide this document to each council member?
No, I sent it to the committee, I believe.
Okay. If we could make copies... particularly if it's in the color because when it's black and white, it doesn't make sense. But if we could make copies of that so they can follow along. And colleagues, what you're going to get is a document from the CAO's office that identifies the eligible underwriters and those that are under investigation... under a lawsuit by the city of L.A. under its current derivative issue. So why don't we go through who is being recommended for underwriting from the bench? And who's left on the bench if... once you've made a choice of these underwriters?
Would you like me to summarize the lawsuit for you?
Yeah, why don't you do that? That's good.
Okay. On July twenty-third, the city filed a complaint in the Superior Court of the county.
Let me just interrupt you one... colleagues, what she's referencing is this motion that we passed out so you can follow along with her statements so you get an idea of what essence...
The motion that stamped... excuse me. The motion that stamped dated July eighteen, two thousand and eight on the right-hand corner?
Yes.
Because they give us a bunch of documents. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Yes.
In which the city alleges that the defendants, including Bank of America Securities, Citigroup Inc., J.P. Morgan Chase, and Merrill Lynch and Company, conspired to decrease the returns that public entities earned on municipal derivative instruments, which are guaranteed investment contracts, swaps, and options by allocating the municipal derivative market among themselves and rigging the bidding process by which the public entities acquire municipal instruments. As a result, the complaint alleges the city suffered harm in several ways, including, but not limited to, receiving artificially depressed rates of return on our municipal instruments and knowingly being forced into municipal derivative transactions, which carried increased credit costs and being forced to pay inflated fees and costs associated with municipal derivative transactions. In February two thousand and seven, Bank of America announced that it had been accepted into the United States Department of Justice antitrust divisions corporate leniency program in order to avoid criminal liability for its involvement in a conspiracy to manipulate the municipal derivative market. Under this amnesty program, Bank of America has agreed to fully cooperate with the Department of Justice investigation into market municipal manipulation. So the list that we passed out...
Excuse me, Natalie. Mr. Smith has to make it.
Just for public record, Mr. President, I have to recuse myself from this issue because of stock ownership.
All right. Thank you. You want to be taken off the board? Mr. Smith is recusing himself. So please, please remove him from the board. Thank you.
So the list has four columns. And in those four columns, we're trying to show you the forty firms that the two lawsuits included. Actually, two lawsuits. One on market municipal derivatives. And the other one has to do with the bond market...
Thank you.
Bond insurance market that collapsed. The second column is a list of underwriters that the council approved on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and eight. Number two, Bank of America Securities, Citigroup, and J.P. Morgan Chase are part of the lawsuit that you see on the left-hand side. The third column shows those lists of underwriters that are not part of the case that I just described. The fourth column shows the nine firms that we sent requests for information to do the triune. The way the process works is we have the list of fifteen underwriters. We look at those that we believe are most qualified for that particular bond issue. And in this case, it was the nine in column... in the very last column. It says May fourth, two thousand and ten. Out of those nine, that we believe the top firms were Bank of America Merrill Lynch, J.P. Morgan Chase, Loop Capital, and RBC Capital Markets. We believe that those four firms were the most qualified to the trans based on their response to the request for proposal. And they were rated on their ability to sell the bonds, to market the bonds. Obviously, price paid was included. But really, how they would be able to market and sell our bonds, what kind of buyers they would have. And of course, lastly, the ability to take the bonds into their own inventory if they had to, if they didn't sell. So at this point in time, the CAO recommended Bank of America Merrill Lynch, J.P. Morgan Chase as the lead senior underwriter, Loop Capital, and RBC Capital Markets.
Natalie, let me ask, on those four firms, what is the percentage that... or has that been worked out of their underwriting?
Number fifty, thirty, ten, and ten? Yeah. Fifty percent for J.P. Morgan, thirty percent for Bank of America, ten percent for Loop, and ten percent for RBC.
And if I read your chart accurately, I would assume that Loop and RBC are considered, what, mid-level firms?
Loop is considered a small firm. And RBC is a mid-level firm, yes.
Okay. And so they would... and they... neither one of them, if we look at the list on the far left, are under the lawsuit currently?
No. The ones that are under the lawsuit are Bank of America Merrill Lynch because Bank of America bought Merrill Lynch and J.P. Morgan Chase.
Okay. Is... when you mentioned that, would the Bank of America in and of themselves are under the lawsuit?
Yes.
Or only because they purchased Merrill Lynch?
No, they are mentioned. Bank of America Securities was mentioned. The... but to be clear, on the far-left side, it's the investment side of those firms that are being... that are being, I guess, prosecuted. It's not the underwriting firm, although it's the same company.
Same company? What, for the same board of directors, the same CEO?
I would assume so.
Yeah, okay. The other thing I want to ask you is that has either one of the firms, Loop or RBC, done larger amounts of funds for the city? Because I'm assuming that they're ranging at ten percent as one point. There'd be about a hundred million. Have they done larger underwriting projects with us than what we're recommending, the ten percent?
Not that I recall. This is one of the largest. RBC, I don't think we've used them as often as we've used Loop. But a hundred million is one of the bigger ones that I think Loop has received.
Are we aware if either one of those firms have done significantly higher underwriting for other municipalities or states or other types of bonds?
RBC has. RBC is a mid-level firm. So I don't have the information in front of me because I didn't bring the RFPs with me. But because they are a mid-level firm, I would assume they've done bigger deals than a hundred million.
Okay.
I'm not sure about Loop. I'm sure they have too, but not necessarily in the trans market. I can't...
Is there a significant difference in underwriting trans or water or electric things?
Yes.
What would be the significant difference?
Trans are notes. They're short-term. And so the problem right now with the short-term market is that people are unaware... the market is unsure when rates will go up. So at the last minute, like we did last year, we had to restructure the financing from one to three different maturities. And so what that means is that you take a chance in not being able to sell the notes. They're also short-term, which means that you have to have a short-term desk.
Let me ask you also, and then I'll push my button again, is that when you talk about capacity, are you looking at capacity in two ways? Their ability to basically underwrite a large portion
Correct.
of debt. But also, part of that capacity is whether they'd be able to absorb if they couldn't sell. So it's two different phases of capacity?
Correct. It's capacity to market the bonds based on their network of distribution. And it's also their... the second, what you said, which is the absorption of the bonds.
So the issue is if, in the past, if companies... if any of these smaller or mid-sized companies have sold or underwritten a billion-dollar bond deal, they would have capacity. But you're concerned about whether, if they can't sell them, can they absorb them?
Correct. And we looked at the possibility of spreading this out among a lot of different firms, more than four. And we felt that that was unmanageable and that it was better for the city to use a Bank of America and a J.P. Morgan and get a better rate.
Unmanageable on the side for the city's resources or manageable from the bank's side?
From the investor's side. If you had six to seven or eight on a billion-dollar deal is very different than having, you know, twenty-five, like the state does, on a ten-billion-dollar deal. It's a very different combination. It has to do with the investors being able to buy and... and then who they go to.
Okay.
And we felt that these four were the strongest. And since they were on the list, we moved forward.
Okay, thank you. I'll push my button again.
Mr. Cardenas?
Here it comes.
Thank you. When you say that we're on the list, we have various lists.
Correct.
Which of the narrowed-down list did you just refer to?
Column two, the fifteen firms?
Fifteen firms, okay. And you mentioned earlier that of the ones that are being recommended by you, the staff is Bank of America Merrill Lynch, which is one for now, J.P. Morgan Chase and Company, Loop Capital Markets LLC, and RBC Capital Markets.
Correct.
Those are the four different firms. And of those four, two of them are involved in that litigation that was just discussed with Mr. Parks, correct?
Correct.
Okay. One of the things that was just mentioned to me by one of my colleagues as it went through the, I think, the budget committee, is when it went through the budget committee, one of my colleagues was a bit surprised that in the staff report and recommendation, we weren't reminded that some of these firms are in fact in this litigation issue with us. But it did come out in the committee discussion, but it wasn't presented to the committee. And the committee members weren't reminded of that. Go ahead.
I'm Marilyn Garcia with the city attorney's office. When the loss... I've worked with the CAO over a number of years on many financings. And the lawsuit was filed in mid-two thousand and eight when we were going along our financing business. And so at that time, our office and the CAO's office consulted the firms you hired for the litigation, the firms mentioned in the motion. And we were advised that despite the litigation going forward to protect the city's interests and to seek recourse, that the city could continue to use these underwriters on financings. And the attorney gave us specific disclosure language for our financing documents with regard to disclosing the lawsuit. So despite the fact that these firms are affiliated, the... we were advised that it was legally permissible to continue to use these firms.
Okay, I'm glad you reminded me of that. But at the same time, you just explained the detail in which one of the people in the city attorney's office and people in the CAO's office the City Attorney's Office and people in the CIO's office is well-aware of those caveats of color-coded companies, like on this sheet, but the policymakers might not be aware of that at the moment, that they're making policy decisions, which is getting to my point that I was just trying to make a minute ago. And that is that why did the staff omit, or choose not to, or decide not to say, "By the way, just so you're aware, company, Bank of America Merrill Lynch," both of them, when they were separate, were being sued because they're in blue on the sheet that was given to us by the CIO? And JP Morgan, which is in blue, which is one of the four firms that are being recommended here, why is it that we weren't reminded in the process, proactively by the staff, "By the way, policymakers, just so you're aware"?
I mean, it wasn't an intentional omission. We were just, you know, there was an
I'm not making assumptions, Natalie, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah. It was something that we felt had been vetted out by the council before, that we had discussed it. I mean, I, now that we, that we understand that you want us to do that, we will in the future, but we had assumed that, you know, maybe this assumption obviously was incorrect. Yeah.
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 But, but at the same time, I can understand that we wouldn't want to, I would never want to ask staff to apprise us of things that are rumor or conjecture, because that certainly should never, ever, ever interfere with our policymaking. We could probably be sued over that. But I don't think that there's any warning or any reason why we wouldn't want to keep that in mind when we are actively involved in a lawsuit that was proactively enacted on behalf of the city toward these companies. Right?
Right.
Okay. So unless one of my colleagues wants to stand up and say that you don't care to be apprised of those kinds of details in the future, I think that would make sense
Absolutely.
For the CIO, the CLA, the City Attorney's Office, Reckon Parks, etc., anybody who's aware of those kinds of, not rumor and conjecture, but those kinds of facts of the matter, you need to let us know at the time that we're deciding policy. Because with all due respect, if you just look at a regular agenda of the City Council like today, we may have dozens and dozens of items that we have to think about, know about, and, and we make, we vote on, on the same day. And when you look at it within a week, within a month, and within a year, and since the middle of 2008, this City Council perhaps has taken thousands of votes involving thousands of third parties, et cetera, and for us not to be reminded of that, that's, that's not a very good assumption. Especially when, in this particular case, it was high-profile in the middle of 2008 where the press was all over it nationally, locally.
It still is.
Exactly.
It's still down.
So the thing is, I think it's really important for us to be apprised of those matters at the time in which we're actually dealing with those matters. And I'll push my button again, Madam President.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Labange?
Thank you. Just to tally onto that, and not to use this analogy, but when you go to the airport, you check in, there's a list that you're on or not on that tells you whether you should get on that plane. In this sense here, do we need a list that says these are people that we're engaging? And I'm looking at the City Attorney, because it may be deeper.
I, I'm not sure what that means, so.
Well, you said there's some banks that are suing us, right?
No, we're suing them.
We're suing them, okay. Vice versa. Should we, should we have a list of those things and the variety of issues as we go forward, not just this, but other things as well?
We'll identify in our reports going forward that they're part of the municipal lawsuit. That, we will do that.
Right. Okay, full disclosure on that. And then what are the other banks that you're going to look at then?
The other banks are included
National City Bank?
Uh, no, the banks that are mentioned here are
No, but to look at to do business, I'm, I'm just
Oh, I don't know, I, I
How do you let them know that you want to do business with them?
Well, there's a qualified list that the council approved, so that's the list
But you know that list, I don't know that list, you know that list. You're the CIO, right?
Right.
So you have a list, so you go off the qualified list, and you're thinking of trying to
Right. And we send out an RFP to those that we feel are most qualified for that particular bond issue.
And they ask whether, and they decide where they want to be in business. Do any of them not want to be in business with us?
No, I mean, there's some that don't respond to a particular area of bonds
Which?
Because they're not interested.
Right.
We've had that happen, where they're saying, "Thank you very much, but we'll respond to the next bond issue."
Right.
We have had that happen, because either it's too small for them or too big for them, or
And are these documents, when you do the RFP, you publish that, the 30-day, all the same requirements?
No, because, because we already have a qualified list, it's more of like a request for information that we do by email, that those firms are on the list.
Do we put it on a website or something?
No, because
Should we do that, though?
No, because it's only for those that are on the qualified list. We did that the first time.
I understand, but I'm just looking for transparency, Patricia.
Counselor member, I would clarify, when we established the list, we went through that public process where we issued the RFP to the world of banks, and then we culled it down to a list that we then use until it expires.
Right, you advertise for the job, everybody got a shot for the job, the six that you selected are 12 or 24, whatever it is, now you don't want to advertise that because you, they're the ones you're doing business with.
Yes, and when we establish the list, we tell them we're establishing that list for a period of time.
You clarified the point. Thank you so much, all of you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Oh, no, sorry. I thought I said it, but I
Mr. Weisar?
Thank you, Madam President. First, let me say I totally agree with the points that Mr. Cardenas made, because I was one of those members on Budget and Finance that I certainly would have appreciated being made aware that there is existing litigation between the City of Los Angeles and those firms you chose to do this transaction for us. But putting that aside, that we should be made aware of those types of issues, let's put that aside. The second issue for me is, in this litigation, does it rise to the level of, hey, we really don't appreciate what this firm did to the city, let's not do business with them?
Well, these are allegations.
Let me ask you, and I'm not aware of, I'm trying to figure this, I did ask for a written report on this, I didn't get it. That's another issue that I have with the way this whole process has been handled. In Budget and Finance, I asked for a written report, what this litigation is about, so that I could determine as a policymaker whether this rises to the level of, should I, or should we, or should we not be doing business with this, these firms?
I would like our City Attorney to give us some guidance about the extent to which we can talk about the lawsuit, both from a Brown Act point of view and from a closed session point of view. I think so far
If I, if I could, if I could
No, and I don't mean to cut you off, I just don't want to start talking about the lawsuit if I should
I got it, yeah.
And, and we've already disclosed the, the nature of the lawsuit and
Mr. Weisar, the TRAN has some relation to the firms in that litigation, however, a complete discussion regarding the litigation would be inappropriate at this time. Because we do not agendize it. That's correct. Okay.
I, I think the city, I think we are coming forward with the, I think, in committee, Pete was there, and I think that we, the City Attorney did agree to come forward with the update for you on where we were.
Yeah. So you see, now, this is the predicament we're in. We have a billion, over a billion dollars of transactions that this city has to make in such a short period of time.
Correct.
And me, as a decision-maker, I don't have the information before me to evaluate whether this litigation rises to the level of me saying, "I don't want to do business with this firm." I may say, "Hey, okay, it's litigation, we're okay with it, let's keep doing business with them." I may not, but we don't even have that information. Somebody in the CIO's office, whoever handles this, made that decision for us, and, and we, as decision-makers, have to make that evaluation, and we're in a position now where we can't make that evaluation because our backs are against the wall. We're also told, being told that we have to do this, or we're not going to have the over billions of dollars to pay our bills. So it's not a good position that you have put us in. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, at the time that we did prepare the list of underwriters, we did disclose the fact that there was a lawsuit.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar, Mr. Cardenas again.
I'm sorry, what, what did you say right now, Natalie?
At the time that the list, for the list went forward, just as we were filing the lawsuit, so at the time that we did the list, we did come forward and say these firms were, that we were sued, that we had filed the lawsuit, and they were in the lawsuit.
Okay, but back, again, back then
But, you know, it's been two years.
Yeah, back then.
I understand, I understand.
Thousands of transactions later, from the council pushing their buttons
I agree.
And stuff like that, yeah. So, and, and in the future, on this, on the capacity of bond underwriters, investment firms, et cetera, because with all due respect, there's a whole heck of a lot of lawsuits going on with cities and counties, municipalities, private industry toward a lot of these firms. And with all due respect, I would, I would assume that some of that craziness that was going on led to the, the fact that some firms that had a shingle up front saying, "We've been in business since 1778, we're so rock-solid, they're not even here anymore." I would, I, I, personally, I think that that's probably one of the reasons why some of them are no longer here.
I agree.
Because they got so Don Carveluded and so comfortable in the realm of their industry and the way that they do business, that they, they really messed themselves up pretty bad. But, but on this particular transaction, what I'd like to see in the future is, as early as possible, when you're putting together the list of underwriters, et cetera, before you come to the policymakers for the last decision as to who's going to be the lucky winners and the lucky losers, and, and the lucky winner should always be of firms that categorically are qualified to do a good job for the City of Los Angeles.
We can't come to this.
What I would recommend, that we color-code those lists all the time.
Okay.
Okay? All the time. Because, and I personally, even though I have in the back of my mind, I remember one or two firms very strongly, personally, I remember them, that, wow, they were one of those firms. Like B of A comes to mind immediately, because they were the first ones that raised their hand and said, "Yeah, some bad stuff went on, and we want to go ahead and come clean and, and talk about all the other firms that may have been doing that as well." But I don't have, in my mind, I don't have the list of all of them. So it always helps to get something
Absolutely.
That, that reminds us at the time that we're making policy decisions.
We will attach that list to our reports in the future, absolutely.
Okay. And also, if maybe Mr. Parks would want a second, that I'd like to make a motion that, that we, in the, in the transactions in the future, that we always be apprised of the litigation, et cetera, that is or is not going on within the firms that we're recommending to do business with on those transactions. And as we're proving today, even though there's litigation, we're very likely going to move forward with this TRAN, even, TRAN, even though some of these firms are doing, they're in litigation with us, we're in litigation against them. So my point is, from a legal vantage point, I'm not saying that by color-coding them, we're omitting them automatically. I'm not saying that at all. All I'm saying is that we should be aware of those facts and be reminded of those facts so that we can, we can make policy decisions with awareness.
Absolutely. We'll attach them to all future debt reports, not a problem.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Parks?
And we'll let our friends know, the other debt issuing departments to the center.
Yeah, I'm going to ask them to come, I'm going to ask them to come back. Okay. Let me just ask, I know there's a timing issue, and the fact that these people are on a bench, we don't have to go out to RFP and all of this stuff.
Correct.
What would be the timing mechanism to ask the CIO to come back on a reconfiguration of having a group of four companies that are not, none of which are being sued? What would that take?
For this deal?
Pardon? For this deal, yes.
For this deal, well, we are pretty much done at this point. We're just waiting for council approval to move forward to actually market the bonds. We had a schedule to sell on June 29th. Because the TRAN cannot be started until the budget is completed, they have a very short period of time to sell the TRAN, and also because of the controllers' need for cash.
Okay. Let me ask that question in another way then.
Okay.
If this doesn't go forward today, how quickly could you revamp the deal with four different, with four companies that are not being sued? I understand you've done a lot of work to get here today, but what would be the timeline?
It would take us at least a month to do all the work again.
Okay, when you say a month, why would it take a month?
Because the firms that have worked on this have already, we've already prepared all the documents, and they've already done some of the marketing involved, so we would have to start all over with new firms.
Well, then that concerns me even more than, if you brought us a cooked deal, then why are we talking about it?
Well, we bought you based on the list of underwriters that you have already approved.
Yeah.
I mean, the underwriters that we chose were not that we chose them, we recommended to you in July the underwriters, and part of that process was that, once it's approved in the budget, that the underwriters were previously approved. What we're asking for now is council approval to approve the resolution and to actually sell the bonds. But you've already approved the underwriters.
I know. Let me go back to what I remember. I know that we approved the underwriters.
Correct.
But when you select them and bring them back to us
Correct.
I don't think our, my understanding is that it's a done deal because you picked four underwriters. My understanding is you bring us back four underwriters, saying, "This is who we recommend does this deal."
No, we're not asking for approval of the underwriters. We're actually, we're actually asking for approval of the deal of selling the bonds. You've already approved the list of under, that's why we have a list of underwriters.
I know, but again
If not, it's two extra steps.
Let me go back and tell you what my understanding. We approve a list of underwriters.
Correct.
But when you select the four underwriters, it's my impression that that deal doesn't go forward as cooked until it comes to council. So to tell us today they've already done all the work, and they've already done all their advertising, and we're just going to do a perfunctory deal of saying, "We want to approve the resolution," is far beyond what I thought having a bench was.
That's part of
If I'm any correct.
Well, I think there's a misunderstanding then of what was approved for bond counsel, underwriting, and financial advisors. Those three types of services are pre-approved by the, by the council, so that says that all 15 firms are qualified.
Let me stop you right there. They are on a list that we approve, but when you select them off the list, you still have to come to council.
Right, but we start working with them once we go through an RFP process, and those four were chosen, and then we move forward.
Yeah, but, but by who?
You gave us the authority to negotiate and execute as part of the, of this of underwriters, that's the way it's always been done.
Well, no.
On all, on this particular list, and starting back for, for bond counsel and for financial advisors, and not, we've come to council three times, it's come
But actually, I don't think we should misinterpret, because we have supported your recommendations, that we didn't believe we had the ability to change
You can change
The underwriters, because we've done that before. We've, we recently
Yes, you have.
Changed underwriters, I believe
In 2006.
2006, that, did we do something more recently?
Uh-uh.
No, that was, no, we added people to
On the general phase you did, but that was at the point in time when we came with you to the, with the list.
Yeah.
Once we came with the list.
The thing is, let me, let me just say what I, I think we approved. I thought we approved underwriters and having a bench. We gave the CIO the ability to go to that bench and pick people you thought were best suited. But the deal wasn't done until you bring those to council and we agree on the underwriters and the deal.
That's a change.
That's my understanding.
Oh, that's
And so, to come today and say, "You selected the four, and that gave, we've advanced you that ability," is different than what I think we approved.
Councilman Parks, I think, I, I heard the original question of, of this question to be a question about timing and why, um, timing is important and why it wouldn't work. And I must say that this, the TRAN deal, especially this year, is a very unique deal, because as Natalie said, you can't start this until the budget is adopted, and then the sooner we get to market in light of this year, that's where the city is going to get, be able to sell the TRANs, and it's even unclear whether all of this will sell, because in, for other deals, sizable deals, that didn't happen. And we have been involved with the, the tentatively-selected underwriters, the designated underwriters, on many, many intense calls about the budget and cash flows, where they've been focusing in very deeply on how this is going to get done. And I, from my vantage point, even though I'm the attorney, this would probably, and then with this budget year, this would probably be the one transaction where I, there can't be a delay. And I was involved in the 2006 transaction where you guys were designated, and that, there was a window of opportunity to be able to do that, but I don't think that if
Let me just say, I think the reason we got involved in this process from the council standpoint is because we were tired of getting the last-minute deals that said, "You got to do it by Tuesday or we'll die." And we said, "Well, let's not die, let's move it back, let's do it another way." We, I don't think we ever gave up our responsibility to say, "When you bring us something," we could not alter it or change it, and we've always ended up a situation, when you put us in a bind to say, "We must do it today," we often don't make the right decision. I have a very difficult time today and in the future saying that I would vote for Bank of America on anything until they resolve their conflict of costing us literally millions of dollars and municipal agencies throughout the nation, billions of dollars, for being involved in a conspiracy. And the fact that they have a different door that we walk in doesn't mean that they're absolved of that culpability, and I just don't see how we can go to them. And just as we've spoken committee, Goldman, you clearly understood that conflict and said we would have never recommended them. I don't know how Bank of America got a clean bill of health differently. We have conflict of interest farms that come in that you're a part of, that just tells us, attorney so-and-so is working on a case in water and power, and his company is doing something in Harbor, and we get that level of scrutiny for conflict. If this isn't a conflict, I don't know if we've seen one.
I just want to say that we have a list of underwriters right now. If you're unhappy with that list of underwriters, we can go out to RFP again, and that's fine. The problem is that we have.
I think you're missing my point. We have a list of, of underwriters that's this long.
Correct.
We don't have to pick those that are under investigation because we have other options.
The problem will be, is that if we, if you want to enter the municipal market, we have been put in a very difficult position by the federal government. The federal government has not excluded these firms and participated in the municipal market. So the problem is that if, if the decision is made not to use any of these firms, then the city will not be able to access the market in the way it has in the past. I mean, we not only use these firms as underwriters, but they also hold letters of credit for the city, so the entire wastewater program would fall apart.
Okay. Let me ask.
So my issue is.
I'm amazed that you say it would take us another month. We can't, certainly we can't afford another month. We need the trans, but we don't need to make bad decisions to get.
No, I think, Councilman, I think, I think you raise a good point. I think the point that you're making is, there's currently pending litigation with this particular bank, and the question is, should we be doing business with a, with a firm where we have potential litigation, particularly when it comes.
Not only potential litigation, they're the leader of the band.
I understand it.
I mean, so, it's not like they're peripheral.
I think from, from, I think you raise a very legitimate issue. And from our standpoint, our processes is that, if we, if you were to look at the list of who's eligible, okay, there are 40 firms that are, and under the same, have the same conflict, potential conflict, okay? All of them, every, virtually every single major firm and a lot of the smaller firms. When this issue was raised within the context of this process, we went to the city attorney to ask for clarification on the conflict. And we would not be here today recommending moving forward with Bank of America if the city attorney had raised that as an issue.
I know, but you brought up a very important point. They gave you a legal opinion and avoided the policy decision as related to what the council's purview is. So legally and policy-wise, you're dealing with two different.
You're correct. Ultimately, you make the policy decision. That is correct.
They may, you know, they may give us a legal opinion. And I think the issue is, we have chosen, and many times, to be far at arm's distance of conflict rather than right on the edge of conflict.
Right.
And so that's, that's what my concern is.
So, so let's assume for a second that, that we don't move forward with Bank of America. We all, obviously, under the same, you know, conflict, we'd not be able to use JP Morgan, Citi Group as well.
We use Goldman.
We have, we currently are in partnership with these firms on other, on other deals, including the parking garage, for example, with JP Morgan, who's one of the leads on this issue. I think what's important, what I would recommend, what would be helpful for us, is that if there's going to be a policy discussion on who we engage in a partnership with as a result of this litigation and this conflict and policy, not a legal conflict, as you pointed out, then I think that conversation needs to happen. It'd be very helpful for us to have clarity as to who it is that we're supposed to work with and who we should not, based on the policy directive that you provide. The, the challenge with this particular deal is the timeframe. And, you know, I'm scheduled to go to Boston and New York on Monday and Tuesday and talk to our investors, and talk to our bond rating agency specifically in preparation for the tran. And I, I'm in a better position to be able to provide clarity as to who's going to be doing this work. I think it's a challenge if I'm not. I mean, it's not an impossible challenge, I'm not saying that, but it is, it is a challenge.
Well, part of our job is to make things impossible for you. But I think the one thing that we did when Mr. Cardenas headed the committee to look at this issue, what we were told over and over again is certain firms couldn't get business because they couldn't handle the capacity. We then put together a bench that said, do we always have to do capacity at $1 billion? Couldn't you cut it up into 200 million? Could you cut it into 300 million? Those types of issues, and we were told, yes, that's why we have a bench of mid-size, large, and small. I don't know mechanically what it takes, but if my math is correct, if you had a few firms at 200 million that are not being investigated, what, I know we say it's more difficult, but on the other hand, it's very difficult for us to have been a part of a conspiracy that meant much of our general fund money went to Bank of America and others that we're now laying off hundreds of people. Those are very difficult situations also. So it may be more difficult, but in the long term, how do we get the bonds sold? How do we deal with reputable companies? How do we continue our lawsuit to get our money back and not fill the pockets of those who took it in a conspiracy?
And what my recommendation would be, sir, is that, is that we bifurcate the issues of policy of conflict, as you've laid out, and this, this particular tran. If there's going to be a discussion and a debate, and ultimately a decision on how to engage in addressing that policy, that conflict and policy, then I think that would be helpful for us to have direction on, which, because it doesn't just impact this deal, it impacts a number of different projects that we're working on.
Mr. Parks.
On the investment side as well.
Okay, one more, and then I've got to let you.
All I'm going to say is this, I think we need the healthy discussion, but I don't think this deal should be a gate around it that says, let's go forward and then discuss it later. As long as the firms that are being investigated, my personal vote, I won't vote for it. As much as I know that we need the trans, I will not put us in that situation.
Mr. Weezer.
I just want to make one quick point, and that is, I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding of what a bench is for us to select firms. At the school district, at MTA, and other departments within the city, when we have a bench of firms, and then we select out of 20, let's say five, to do a project.
Correct.
Or a transaction. When it comes before the board or the council to make a decision to authorize that project or that transaction, we are also authorizing those five firms to do the work. Natalie, what I heard from your response is that you don't think that's the case. But let me tell you why I do believe that should be the case. I assume we have a policy on diversity, on local firms, size of firms, that we need to follow. So when there's a particular transaction that comes for council for approval or authorization, we will need to see if the selected firms fits our policy or not. And in this case, what we're discussing, we also need to see whether there's conflicts or not, and whether we feel comfortable with that. So we also should be authorizing those firms. If that is not the case, Mr. CIO, I suggest we go back and change how we select underwriters and how they come before us, because that is not the normal way selecting firms from a bench works here in any department or anywhere else that I'm familiar with. So we really, I don't want to discuss any further, but we really need to go back to make sure that we are following protocol and proper procedure, which I think, Ms. Natalie, in your response, that is not how you see it, how it works. So we really have to go back and change that.
I think, I think you're right. I think clarifying the policy and certainly, and adding the issue of conflict beyond just the legal threshold, is, that's ultimately your decision.
Yes, right.
I mean, we decide who we want to do business with all the time.
Right.
And, and, and I think that's a fair discussion to have, and it would be helpful for us to have that direction. My only point here is that, you know, this, we're so far along in this particular case that it becomes a challenge, I think, to do it in this context, but from here on forward, it would be very helpful to have that.
Yes, in this particular case, that is, but I would entertain either administrative discussion, or there has to be a motion that's introduced to clarify that, so that whatever procedures are used in selecting firms off the bench, that it complies with the way we do it with all others, because, like I said, for me, what's important is if we're following our policies on big or small firms, local, non-local firms, et cetera. So I just would look at that, to see whatever decisions are made with whatever criteria to select those firms to do a particular transaction, so long as they comply with our policies and there are no conflicts that we feel uncomfortable with.
Okay.
There's no motion, there's, yeah, that's it, there's no further speakers in the queue. So, Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
Counsel may wish to make a motion on the item as the item was submitted without recommendation.
So counsel may wish to make a motion on the, I couldn't hear you. You want to repeat it?
It was submitted without recommendation, therefore counsel will need to make a motion.
Mr. Parks, what is your?
I have a motion that we not approve this proposal, and we ask the CIO to come back with firms that are not under the current lawsuit, and to bring that back to the council for final approval.
All right, we have a second for Mr. Rosendahl. All right, Mr. Parks, would you restate your motion so everyone can hear it, and?
I would move that we do not approve the current proposal before us, and we ask the CIO to bring back a trans that has companies that are not currently as, as part of the current lawsuit that we provided to you.
We have a second for Mr. Rosendahl.
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I reluctantly move that we approve this transaction, and that we move forward with a separate, with, and that they start working on the motion that I made earlier, and that, as was stated, the concerns that was brought up by Councilmember Weezer will handle in a separate motion. So again, I reluctantly make a substitute motion that we approve this transaction as it's presented.
All right, Madam Clerk, so, should we vote on Mr. Parks' motion first, and then Mr. Cardenas?
It's the last motion first, that would be Councilmember Cardenas's.
All right.
And a second for his motion?
Mr. Weezer, is there a second for your motion, Mr. Cardenas? Okay, second by Ms. Han.
This is a very difficult situation, because, look, I totally agree with the issues that were raised by Mr. Parks, and I think that is the right way to vote today. However, several people have told us that we have $1 billion on the plate that we need to use to pay our bills. I want to be very, very clear. If this transaction does not move forward, can you or can't you come back in time with a new proposal of firms so that we are able to pay our bills? Trans dollars are used to pay our immediate bills. I just want to be very, very clear on that point.
I asked my staff the same question, knowing there was concerns, and it was very clear that it would be close to impossible to be able to do it in the timeframe we need to get done to obtain the $1 billion tran that we need. And, and so, I think that the proposal that Mr. Cardenas has raised, I think, addresses both issues. It allows us to move forward and not jeopardize the tran that we're on, but I think, as important, lays out a framework to start identifying those policy issues, both in conflict and in diversity, that I think this council should, it would be helpful for us to have clarity on. And then, as we proceed forward, once that policy is adopted, then we can move on.
Okay, and my final point, I have a little more time, is, I totally agree with Mr. Parks' motion, because I, as I expressed earlier, the CIO's office has put us in a very bad situation, not having the information before us for us to evaluate whether we can or cannot or should not do work with a particular firm. At the same time, I think there's a misunderstanding of how these bench, benches work. It's not up to the CIO to bring someone forward and, hey, we already have the approval to use these firms. You know, we have to look at policies and procedures and whether we're complying with them, and whether there's conflicts. So for the record, I agree with Mr. Bernard Parks' motion that we shouldn't move forward because we don't have the proper information before us. However, this is one of those situations where $1 billion is at stake, so I think the proper thing to do would go with Mr. Cardenas and get out of this situation. And whatever happened today cannot happen again. Billion dollars at stake. We are not pleased with the way this was handled.
That's clear. Thank you.
I would just like to make sure that the council is aware we do have another deal pending before council that will be coming up in the next week with our wastewater, so that you're going to have the same issues there because of this discussion. And so, just so you're aware, it is out there, because it was already in process before we had this conversation.
No, we have existing letters of credit with Bank of America and JP Morgan, and because of market, there is no credit to be had, we surveyed the banks, and the only ones that were willing to deal with us were the ones that we already had letters of credit with, which are Bank of America and JP Morgan, as well as Wachovia, Wells Fargo, and there's just nobody out there. And all these banks are in the municipal market, and there's nobody out there. If we cancel the letters of credit, then we have a problem with, we have bonds outstanding of six to 700,000, six or 700 million dollars, that we have bond covenants that require a certain amount of coverage, which, I mean, it gets into wastewater rates, I mean, I don't think you want to have this conversation right now, but we're in a bind, because we have these existing relationships, and all these banks are out there that are part of this lawsuit. I mean.
Okay, we have two, two motions on the desk right now, and Mr. Reyes has pressed his button to speak. So before we get into the voting, Mr. Reyes?
Just one more point of clarification in terms of timing. I just want to play this scenario out. If we support Congressman Parks' position, we don't have the financial wherewithal to pay our bills, is that's the bottom line?
Correct. There's $450 million that we're using to pay bills, and an additional $700 million to pay the pension and retirement contribution. If we don't pay it by July 26th, we have to pay an additional $26 million.
And to put forth language, policy language that addresses the concerns raised by Congressman Parks, do we have time for that, assuming we take care of our bills and assuming that we are in a position to address the financial needs of the city?
Well, I mean, the city borrows money all the time. I mean, that's part of, we do it at good years, we do it in bad years. And so, next year, we're likely to do, we're likely to do another $1 billion tran, and we borrow in between that. So what I would, what I would ask is that the sooner we have clarity on the policy on both conflict and the other issues raised by Councilman Weezer and Cardenas, it would help us in making sure that we're not bringing back the same problem to you again. And so, as well as trying to, and part of that policy could also include the timeframe in which we do these things, so that your council has a greater opportunity to weigh in earlier than.
Correct.
But I would also ask that you give this council a reality check, given our economic condition as a country, as a world, actually, as, what is the banking industry like? What are our options? Who is actually able to perform? Because what I'm hearing also, that's concerned, so, we need to understand the context of our decisions.
We'll do that.
Now, I'll ask for a report back on that.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, we will.
All right, again, we, now we have three more speakers in the queue. Mr. Parks?
Let me just ask Mr. Miller to come up and express any concerns from the CLA's office.
And then I'll call on you next. You, Han, and Rosendahl.
I strongly urge you to move forward on this today. I do understand Mr. Parks' concerns. I would suggest that you instruct that before there are any future sales of any kind, that they come back with a policy and get this resolved. But to get a new team together at this juncture with a $1.2 billion sale and the marketing beginning next week, I believe could seriously endanger our ability to do the trans, and it would be disastrous if we were not able to do the trans.
Let me ask you, Mr. Miller, you were part of that developing of the current policy?
Yes.
What is your impression of what we approved, on using the bench and what the council's authority when these proposals came forward?
The council clearly has the authority to approve the selections of, of the firms for an individual deal. The council also initially approved the firms that were qualified, but on an individual deal basis, you have the authority to approve the firms.
So the fact that we have a bench doesn't mean we've given our authority away when these deals come forward?
No, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Colleagues, let me just say this, because Jerry Miller will not speak to me the rest of this year. We're concerned about July 27th, we have to have this money. If we don't do it today, we can't move forward. So I'm going to swallow hard and ask you to support this today, but that we ask that we go back out to RFP and remove those companies that are in that lawsuit, and bring us back a list, and get a better understanding of what our responsibilities are. us back a list and get a better understanding of what our responsibilities are when they bring us these proposals and we ask that they not be brought back at the last minute. So, that's what I--
Mr. Parks, is that a motion?
That's a motion.
All right, do we have a second on Mr. Parks? Would you, Madam Clerk, is that a substitute motion to his first motion then? All right, now, does that put him in the last motion first position now? That's correct. All right, let's hold that there and then we have four more speakers. Ms. Han, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labange, and Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, and I'm glad that you reframed what you thought we should do as a council because in my heart, I wanted to support your original motion because I believe very strongly that as policymakers, we have a right to say who we want to do business with and certainly firms that we are in a lawsuit with does not seem practical that we then, you know, give them money, they make money off of us because we choose to do business with them. So I was going to ask, out of those firms, those nine firms for the trans underwriters, and I guess you sort of already said that, Jerry sort of said that, but, so you're telling me that none of these other firms could be substituted for Bank of America or J P Morgan? Like you couldn't--
Goldman could.
Goldman Sachs, could they be put in this deal or even at this late date, is what you're telling me?
Goldman is the only one we don't have a suit against right now.
Everybody else on that column--
Of the large firms.
Of the large firms, correct.
Right, so could Goldman be substituted at this point?
You could. They'd have to come in at the last minute, we'd have to change documents again. That's your choice at this point. I mean, I don't know what to tell you. You're asking me, could they? Yes, they could. Last year, they were the lead on the tran. Their R F P was not as strong as Bank of America or J P Morgan this year.
But we're not engaging in a lawsuit with them. I guess that's what I was going to ask, is, was it possible at this point to make a substitution?
You know, they have not been involved with the structuring of the tran, they haven't been involved at all, so it could, but it'd be difficult.
I would go back to sort of, I think Jerry said it the clearest. I think, I think it's very difficult to do it at this point in time. And Goldman, while they're not in a lawsuit, you know, they're in Congress virtually every other day, so there's other issues to consider on that front.
They all have issues.
Well, that's true. I mean, I'm sure all banks at some point have issues at this point, but I think for us, the policy was more about who we were actively engaged in a lawsuit with. I mean, that's, we kind of have to stick with that.
Correct. And don't forget what we've been saying also is that next week, you're going to see the wastewater letters of credit, which are going to be even more problematic.
Well, you know, I mean, that's another subject, colleagues. Do we think by next week, you will have a different list of firms that doesn't involve? No, it's going to be the same--
The letters of credit are negotiated like the underwriters are and the letters of credit are even more difficult to obtain right now than this is. Nobody will do business with us. One of the banks, actually, Bank of Nova Scotia, they didn't even answer our calls. They coun, they didn't extend the letter of credit because of the situation the cities in. We're having a very difficult time because of our financial situation getting people to talk to us. And we're in a bind because all these firms, we're suing.
There's forty firms who are defendants on this lawsuit.
And all of them are big players in the municipal market.
Right. But for instance, is Goldman Sachs a part of the wastewater one?
No, they don't offer letters of credit.
Okay, okay.
It's City, J P Morgan, Bank of America, Wachovia. Those are the banks that provide the letters of credit for the wastewater program.
Now, is Wachovia one of our underwriters on the bench?
No, they're not, but they're being sued.
They're on this, they're one of the--
They're one of the lawsuits, okay.
They're all on there.
Right, okay, well, at this point, I think, you know, you've kind of made the case of why we should approve this, but when we have time on the next deal, that certainly you bring forth a list of firms that is not one of those that we're actively--
We'll try.
And we hope you understand, while all of us didn't get up and speak on this issue, hopefully you understand the situation you put us in and we want you to think more like we're thinking and not just brush aside something like that and feel like it was vetted two years ago. I want you to think like we think and we're very, you know, concerned about who we do business with.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Next speaker, Mr. Rosendahl.
I was going to be rather quick. I'm as angry as Bernard is and we sat in this morning on this I R A meeting or whatever, a hundred million is coming to us on another subject. It's the same damn Bank of America and the same other banks that are doing it because they're the only ones out there in the marketplace. And I think what we're saying as a council is, we're fed up with the banks ripping us off and ripping off everybody in our society and they need dramatic reform. Of course, they got us over a barrel with this money here and running our city. But maybe the message will get back to the big shots of these banks and they begin to realize they're here for us and not for their, just their profit motive that is at the expense of everybody. I'm really fed up and frustrated that we are dealing with the bad guys all the time and when our president threw a trillion dollars almost at the banks, we were expecting them to help the homeowners, but no, they kicked them all out, took their properties and gave themselves bonuses. I feel like John Walsh with my hands, I'm so angry. I really am. No, this is outrageous that they continue to get away with ripping off society in every way, shape, or form. So hopefully, we can come back with a better strategy. Goldman Sachs is just as bad as B of A. They're all in the same bucket. Thank you.
All right, you and your arms can sit down now, thank you. Mr. Labange?
Mr. Rosendahl?
Keep your arms down.
What I want us to have is the most important information. A, a, unless you give structure, then there's no limits. There was no structure on banking, okay, so people do that. Could anyone here stand up and define a derivative to me right now? A derivative in all this that brought the world down? Could anybody here have derivative, Mr. C A O, is you understand that? I'm not putting you on the spot, but the truth really is, that's the world that we're in that these banks have this business that is even before what we understand. I do like to, the cooperation is necessary for us to succeed means a lot of honesty that's got to go in here. And it's also true, and I'm a Democrat and you're a Democrat, I don't talk about that too much in the sense of this, but the Go-Go Nineties led us to where we are today and we were part of that issue. That all being said, I just wanted to make sure that we have the best information and also understand that I don't want to block anybody from this door to come in and help us if they could help us because maybe some of the people who led them wrong have changed just because they're from a company. I don't want to prejudice that if they could deliver for the people of Los Angeles. So that's my statement. Thank you.
Mr. Weisar?
Thank you, just one, one suggestion. Mr. Parks suggested that we, with a motion to no longer do business with those two firms that we're in litigation with, I'm wondering, Mr. Parks, Mr. Parks, yeah, in your motion to not do business in the future with those two firms that are in litigation, I'm wondering if the better route is to do a motion that we have a closed session on that litigation so that we come back, understand it, and then vote whether we no longer do business because you may know the litigation. I don't know what the litigation is about, I don't know where anybody else is, but we need to first fully understand what it is. If it's fraud and the ripping us off, I think most of us say, no, we don't. But, so I'm just suggesting that's a better route.
We can do that, but we had that, those firms from San Francisco here a short time ago and they gave us an update and that's when they advised us that Bank of America stepped forward and said, I give and I'll help you if you don't sue me punitively. So we had that, we can do it again, but it's pretty serious when you look at our list and you see that most of them are part of the lawsuit. And basically, what they did is they rigged the bids, they forced us to pay insurance that we shouldn't have paid and they took literally millions of dollars from us, but we can certainly bring them back.
Yeah, well, I would suggest we do that. I know the city attorney is cringy when we start talking about it and I think it's best that we understand it, get into closed session and then, you know, if we decide at that time, we could decide at that time to follow up and not do business with them in the future, but I think it's best if we come back. Would you amend, are you open to amending your motion, Mr. Parks? To have a close--
That's fine.
Okay.
All right, Parks' motion is now amended by Mr. Weisar's amendment to bring them into closed session. There's no further speakers in the queue. Mr. Parks' motion is now last one in, so first one to be voted on. So Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
All right, now, do we need to vote on the Cardenas' motion? All right, so, all right, thank you very much, everyone. Fourth with on that item. Next item is--
Item thirty-one called Special for Cards.
All right, Dr. Williams, John Walsh, and Arnold Sachs. Is Arnold Sachs still here? Okay, Mr. Sachs, you're out of time for today, so our speakers will be Dr. Williams and John Walsh. I don't see John Walsh here. All right, Dr. Williams, you're up.
Derivatives, D W P's budget. Okay. Arizona, I thought we had passed a motion that Arizona was to be, eh, basically boycotted. Why a one-time exemption? Is this color variance? How many people are involved? How much money? Well, why have it? A rule is a rule. If you're going to base it on principles, let's base it on principles. My wife cannot go to Arizona without her bloody passport, so, because she might be arrested. She has to prove that she is a citizen of the United States because she's not white. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh, John Walsh, he's not present in the chamber. Mr. Smith?
Move to receive and file.
All right, Mr. Smith has made a motion to receive and file this item, so Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on this item? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
All right, next matter of business?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those motions are posted and referred.
There's excuses on the desk. Councilmember Smith requests to be excused on June 22nd for personal business and July 20th and 21st for city business. That meets council policy.
Fine, that'll be without objection.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused June 29th and 30th and July 2nd and 6th for personal business. This meets council policy.
Again, without objection.
And Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on October 8th for city business. This meets council policy.
Without objection.
And the desk is cleared.
All right, thank you very much. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Parks has an announcement and Mr. Rosendahl has an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to announce that in the Eighth District this weekend, we have a number of events on June 19th. The Cherrywood Limerick Park Block Club will be meeting at 10:00 a.m. to noon at Transfiguration Church on King Boulevard. And then, Limerick Park will have at least four Juneteenth events. The annual Juneteenth National Freedom Day will start at 10 o'clock in the park. We'll also have the, the Juneteenth Heritage Festival that will always also be in the park, the Vision Theater parking lot. And then the Barbara Morrison and Friends Father's Day event on the 19th and 20th that will be in the courtyard at Community Bill at 4305 Degman. And also, there's going to be a memorial service. We did a adjourning motion for Dr. Alfonso Hamilton on Wednesday. There'll be a memorial service for him also as part of the Juneteenth celebrations in Limerick Park.
All right, thank you. Ms. Han has an announcement.
Didn't know if we all knew that Shannon Hopps, is that your last name? We all know you. What's your last name? It's your last day here in council chambers. She's actually moving to the airport.
Oh, great, 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 great.
So we just wanted to say goodbye, good luck, and we wish you well. We will miss you. I'm beginning to wonder if Dion has, you know, an influence on people that sit up there. They all leave. Is that about?
Yes, Dion, thank you.
Anyway, we will miss you and wish you well.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. On Monday, June 21st, the first day of summer, longest day of the year, we will have a hike. The public is invited to come. It's from the Griffith Observatory, near the Charlie Turner Trailhead. It's a mile and a half to a beautiful vista at Mount Hollywood, which is sixteen hundred and twenty-five feet above sea level. We will celebrate our sister cities and our constable corps and as we look, as we look to the northwest, I'm proud to say that this week, we closed escrow on the 138 acres of Kowenga Peak, 138 acres of public land that will never be molested by any development. It'll be part of Griffith Park. So it's a great day all the way around. First day of summer this Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Labange and Mr. Rosendahl. Let me just make two quick announcements. This Saturday, tomorrow, at South Park Recreation Center, from 12:00 noon until 2:00, we will begin Council District Nine's Summer Concert Series starring Breezy Lovejoy and Cuentro Latino. And we will, Mr. Labange will like this, be featuring food from Barbie's Q Truck and the Calvi Truck. And we'll be tweeting it, we'll be tweeting it so that we get a good turnout, okay? All right, and then--
They got a good spot.
Okay, thank you. I also want to acknowledge, and I'm sure you all share in the sentiment, the incredible victory last night at the Staples Center. The Los Angeles Lakers make us very, very proud and that was, that was one of the finest games I think I've ever seen in my time here. The level of competition was incredible. So, Mr. Parks and then Mr. Labange?
Based on the victory and the potential parade, we're going to cancel budget and finance Monday, but we're trying to reschedule it during next week, so we'll get back to the members.
Thank you. And Mr. Labange?
I just figure, again, your sentiments, the greatness of our city's National Basketball Association represented Lakers, sixteen times they've won. They've been a lot of greatness to the city and last night, it just showed that defense wins championships. So congratulations and I want Derek Fisher for mayor, so I just want to let you know.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll bring a truck to your house this weekend for the food truck. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, before I do the other announcements, okay, old Rosendahl watched the game last night and in fact, was absolutely glued to the set, especially the fourth quarter and how they turned it around and made it happen. It gives hope to all of us and I'm very glad that Jerry Buss is picking up the tab for the parade on Monday with the city being in the situation we're in. So everything's good about the Lakers and it should be a great day on Monday. Here are three announcements, okay? Saturday, it's called West L.A. Animal Care Adoption Event. This Saturday, the West L.A. Animal Care Center and the Found Animals Foundation will host Better for a Buddy Adoption Event from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. Save 50% on the adoption fees. In addition, Found Animals will be picking up the tab on the second animal that each family is interested in adopting. And this is at 11361 West Pico Boulevard, which is just west of Best Buy. Get yourself a pet, chill out with the animal. It will certainly help you in your life for quality of life. Secondly, if you're in Mar Vista and you want to go to a Neighborhood Association potluck picnic, it's going to be on Barry Block, 3600 of Barry Block, and it's going to be in the afternoon and have fun there. And the last one is the Westchester Library Book Sale. Westchester Library, the one right next to my office there on Westchester on Lincoln and Manchester, has had a book sale this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. At 7114 West Manchester Avenue. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks?
Announcement, really. Just because we're giving so much prop to the Lakers, recently, the council approved a resolution that makes June 11th to July 11th FIFA World Cup month. And just to keep the public aware, the U.S. team in its second game, based on two second-half goals tied Slovenia in today's World Cup match. So, go soccer USA.
That's right. Thank you very much. Now, would you all please rise for adjourning motions? And while we are in the process of doing that, I'd like to do an adjourning motion on behalf of Mr. Zine to remember Susan Burgess, who passed away June 16th, 2010. She is the former-- All right, thank you very much. Mr., we'll, we'll delay the adjourning motion on that individual--
Until they die.
--until the council president returns. Ms. Han?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of two young boys. This was a sad, tragic accident in Wilmington. Four-year-old Alexander and fifteen-year-old Joel Flores, who were tragically killed on June 13th at a truck wash in Wilmington as they prepared to help their father wash his big rig. This was a terrible accident. Fortunately-- Fortunately, the father was moving this big rig to the wash area and was unaware of where the two boys were. So, it's a very, very sad situation. I know the father is devastated, the family is grieving tremendously. They do live in Wilmington, and Alexander and Joel are survived by his parents, Carlos and Fidelina, and they also have an eight-year-old brother. So, memorial services are pending. These kinds of tragedies are so sad and so hard, but we certainly, as a city, want to extend our condolences in their time of grief. I would like us also to adjourn in the memory of Michael Grand of Harbor City, who passed away on vacation into Larry County. He was only 47. Another sad story. He was a father of three. He jumped into the river to help save his son, Stephen, from drowning. He was able to save his son's life by pushing him towards the shore, but was overcome by currents and swept away. He's survived by his wife, Elizabeth, daughters Tiari and Sabrina Grande, and son Stephen, and several grandchildren. Again, these are sad, sad moments in people's lives, and we, again, as a city, we will adjourn in his memory and reach out to the family with our condolences and prayers.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Mr. Keretz, do you have an adjourned motion?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Lou Senenzi, who lived a very full life, was known primarily in the Jewish community, both in Los Angeles and internationally. He was involved in the Zionist movement and supported the state of Israel for almost 70 years. He was locally involved in the Jewish Federation. He was given an award for planning and allocation with the many social services and nonprofits involved in the Jewish community. He was also vice president of the Jewish Labor Committee, which I was on the board of for almost 20 years, and had the chance to work with him as executive director for a while as well. He was also on the board of the Bureau of Jewish Education, was involved in many other nonprofits and good causes over the course of 70 years of activism and a very full life. He was a wonderful man, and he is survived by his wife, Melia, 42 years, and their children, Miriam Brewer and Dave Senenzi, and two grandchildren. And he'll be missed by many people who knew him.
Thank you. Are there any other adjourned motions? Any others? All right, Madam Clerk, would--